Your eyes on the timer device next to Bruce, the little traffic light there. Display, it'll go to yellow when you have about thirty seconds before your three minutes are up, and a red light when your three minutes are up. And if you keep talking after that, we will get the cane. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not to the applicants. And please refrain from applauding or jeering any of the speakers. If your comment is a question about the project, about the proposal, you can say your question at the podium, address it to the planning commission. The applicant will hear it, they can respond if they want, or we can address it when we get to our discussion. But don't turn away from the podium, look for the applicant, start talking to them and having a separate side conversation. This is important. Once the public hearing is closed, the planning commission will proceed to discuss the item. We will receive no additional public comments unless requested by the planning commission. Exhibits may be displayed by the applicants or public at the podium. Written correspondence received by noon yesterday has been forwarded to the commission and is part of the public record. Any additional written materials to be placed into the record must be read during public comment within the time limits previously stated. I would like to briefly acknowledge that we have some staff members outside of planning with us. Mr. Young from Economic Development, Mr. Vaughn from the Fire Marshal, Mr. Dalton from Public Works, and Ms. Bond from Leisure Services may come to ask y'all questions as the night goes on, so you have been warned. And one thing, before we start, wanted to acknowledge that there was a posting error about the time of this meeting today. I heard that there were some folks who showed up here at three o'clock because we had at one point discussed maybe this meeting starting at three o'clock. It did not because a lot of us have to work. But I hear that a lot of y'all showed up because that got posted in error. Sorry for the inconvenience, thank you for being here anyway. We're so glad you're here and to get your comments. And finally, please note that this meeting is being broadcast live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones right now. And with that, let's get into our general business. Can I get a motion for the introduction of staff reports and all of our documents submitted to the planning commission into the official record? Okay. On favor? All right. Does anyone have a motion regarding approval of the July 3th planning commission meeting minutes? Motion to, any motion to accept them?
Make a motion.
On favor? All right. Is there any member of the public here to provide public comment on Macon Horts? Bruce, do we have any news from Macon Horts?
We have nothing to report.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to our first item of old business. We'll hear the staff report. This is on ten thirty, ten forty, and ten sixty Macon Highway, and one hundred, one oh four, one ten, one twenty, one forty, and one four fifty Puritan Lanes.
I know, I was gonna say, thanks for doing that. Are we good? Hey, this is the staff report for PD number twenty twenty-five dash zero four dash zero seven zero two. The aforementioned addresses on Macon Highway and Puritan Lane. There we go. This is a request for a plan development and rezone from mixed density residential RM1 to RM2 with a PD. The proposed plan is for seventy units with a total of two hundred twenty-seven bedrooms, the maximum allowed in an RM2 zone. The applicant has also requested to acquire Puritan Lane right-of-way from ACC. And the applicant has requested one waiver to reduce the conserved canopy from twenty-five percent to seventeen percent. The property is located on the northwest corner of Macon Highway and Puritan Lane, and it currently exists as nine separate parcels. The properties would be combined into a nine point five, four-nine acre tract that includes the abandoned right-of-way. There are single-family structures on each of the existing lots, and the applicant would seek to move those if possible. The area is served by a transit route, Transit Route Number Nine, which is Macon Highway five points, and the only bus stop is up here at the entrance to the River Club Apartments. The current proposal does not include a crosswalk across Macon Highway to access that stop. The properties are already designated mixed density residential. The proposed use is compatible with the future land use map, and no changes required. In the staff report, we state that the project is not compatible with the character description, which calls for buildings to be oriented toward the street with good pedestrian connections and easy access to public transit. We should have clarified that the buildings are now oriented toward the street, so it does meet that portion of the description. However, to provide easy access to the public transit, project requires a safe pedestrian crossing on Macon Highway. The property is currently zoned RM1, as are most of the surrounding properties. The distillery, which is across Macon Highway, is zone CN, and the adjoining ACC property is zone G. There's a little bit of RS5 to the south, and that is part of what was historically the Mill Housing, Mill Village. And those single-family structures are similar in character and size to what is currently existing on the site. It should be noted also that the main difference between the two zonings is that the density would allow for seventy-six additional bedrooms. With that extra density, though, the project does not introduce any type of variety in the housing types. It would qualify for inclusionary zoning, which gives a fifty percent density bonus incentive if they include affordable housing options to very low and low-income households. They would be required to provide a variety of bedroom options to accommodate diverse family sizes and incomes. And in doing so, the project would more closely meet the goals of the comprehensive plan by offering a broader range of housing options. So the site plan shows the twelve two-story townhouse-style structures that have three and four-bedroom units. The entrance at the center of the development, right here, is now a private drive. And about half, well, not about, half of the units have been oriented either towards the private drive or towards Macon Highway, making the, or eliminating the need for the two previous waiver requests that dealt with building orientation and pedestrian access. And while this does create a new block break, staff has determined that one of the blocks is still larger than three acres. So measuring from the edge of the pavement along the private drive to the retaining wall, and from the lot line at Macon Highway to this edge of pavement, and including the parking lot and dumpster pad, that comes out to about three point four acres. So therefore, the applicant either needs to request a waiver or amend the plans. There's on-street parking on the connecting drives and two small lots as well. Open space is mostly along the perimeter of the property, as well as a little bit on the abandoned right-of-way. The applicant has requested a waiver to reduce conserved tree canopy from twenty-five to seventeen percent, which staff does not support this request. A finer-grained configuration that maybe breaks up those large foundations and works with the existing topography could require less grading and allow for more conserved canopy. The easement in the green provides access to the sewer trunk through the development and out towards McNutt's Creek. And it also provides access to the ACC property for maintenance, as well as future access to some walking trails. And there are, in addition to that, there are the five parking spaces that have been dedicated for park use during the day. The architecture hasn't changed much from the preliminary proposal. Units are grouped in five or six per building, requiring twelve large slab foundations. Staff feels these could be broken into smaller buildings to reduce grading and size of retaining walls and allow for more variety in housing type. There are a few buildings proposed that show the same number of units, but are stepped to follow the topography. So staff's recommendation is denial. We find that it does, it is partially compatible with the comprehensive plan. It will add to the housing supply, but only offers a single housing type. Projects of this size really should offer multiple housing types and forms that support a range of residents and household types. We also find that it's compatible with the zoning and future land use map in terms of the use. It's incompatible with the future land use character description that calls for pedestrian access to transit, and also it could take advantage of the inclusionary zoning density bonus. One waiver that was requested is for the conserved tree canopy, and as stated previously, staff does not support the waiver and would rather see a finer-grained approach that works with topography and preserves tree canopy. There are some suggested conditions if approved. One, that the plan shall be amended to resolve all outstanding corrective actions, mainly by requesting a waiver for the maximum block size or amending the plans. And also, number two, the plan shall be amended to address issues raised by leisure services, including adding to the easement so that there's enough area for the trail to follow a contour line. That five parking spaces for the ACC park use be changed from compact, as shown on the plans, to standard-sized spaces. The developer will work with ACC Park Planning Office to install signs for the parking. The sidewalk will be extended to provide pedestrian connection from the parking area to the trails, and bike racks would be moved accordingly. And a six-foot-wide curb cut would be added to allow access for the vehicles when maintaining the property. And the third condition is that the applicant will design and install a pedestrian crossing across Macon Highway in conformance with the standards of TPW in transit. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Justin Greer with Pittman, nearing ten fifty Barber Creek Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to present this project before you this evening. As we begin, I want to highlight that coming out of the last meeting, we worked diligently on plan revisions to address staff concerns in trying to eliminate some of the waivers we were requesting. Originally, we were requesting four waivers, and we felt that we modified the plan to address at least three of those. Since the last time you reviewed the plan, viewed the project back in May, we have moved units to front along Macon Highway, so these turned. We also modified the main entrance drive coming in via more like a private drive with on-street parking. In doing this, we were able to eliminate two of the waivers. However, in doing that, we had to give up something on-site, and it was a second direct access point that we had to give up right here. I want to take a minute to discuss tree canopy, as this is one of the waivers we couldn't eliminate. On the screen, you'll see an aerial of the site. At a quick glance, it looks like there's a lot of trees. But if you'll notice on this slide, you'll see just how much canopy there is actually in. But there's a lot of area, you know, in here that's just really not true canopy cover. Our existing site is roughly nine and a half acres total. And of that, those tree groups, as you see in green, they total about five point ten acres. That's about fifty percent of the site, fifty-four percent. The required tree save area is twenty-five percent of the overall site. This means that we would need to retain fifty percent of that canopy to meet the twenty-five percent site conserved canopy requirement, and that's illustrated in red. Again, as you can see, we're really limited in the areas that have trees. We tried to focus the bulk of our development toward Macon Highway, out of that main bulk of body of trees, to try to preserve that area. To mitigate not meeting the conserved canopy requirement, I'll show you this. So the purple area is what we're conserving. That's about seventeen percent. That's what we're proposing on our plan. So we've tried to keep that tree area, you know, tried to maintain that bulk of that tree area in the rear of the property. And that's due to topo requirements, I mean, grading, overcoming that. To mitigate not meeting the conserved canopy requirement, we're proposing a total tree canopy, conserved and planted, of sixty percent of the site. We're only required to have fifty percent, that's ten percent over, and that ten percent makes up the difference in the conserve of what we would have been required and we're not. Next, I would like to touch on staff's comments about block size. As you can see in this illustration, this is what we have interpreted to be blocks, which is a little different from staff. And this area to the north is two point nine seven acres. I think staff said they counted it to the back of the curb. We counted the sidewalks out of the block, that'd be a road, so that'd be required as part of the road. We also included this area here as part of the private drive. We didn't show parking on that here. We have a hammerhead here to get fire truck turn around, same thing here. In talking with Bruce, we did provide on-street parking, I'm sorry, we did provide street trees on both sides of that drive. And in talking with Bruce, it cannot be counted as a drive because we don't have sidewalks on both sides. We thought about that, we talked about that internally. That provide sidewalks on this western boundary means more grading, which means that, you know, like we just showed in there, we would encroach that tree save area even more. So that's one reason we tried, we did not show sidewalks on this side. There's some sidewalks connecting this part. We can go back and add a sidewalk connecting this upper and lower here. The other thing about the sidewalks is we felt like providing access to the trailhead here and providing the parking. We designated some parking in here, five spaces to access that trailhead. You know, that could be seen as a trade-off for the required sidewalk. Because really, all that sidewalk is doing on this western side, that's a dumpster, that's a dumpster. You're connecting two dumpsters, and there's nothing over here, no residences. So it's really not going to be used as much as, you know, these in here adjacent to the buildings are through here. If staff doesn't think we meet the requirement, we do need that variance to be brought forward to the mayor commission. In the staff report, it states that breaking the units into smaller buildings should be considered to reduce the need for extensive clearing and grading. So we looked into that after getting the staff report. This is our concept plan, as you have received it, and this is the change. So I'm gonna flip back and forth a little bit, so you can see how changing, so we've divided every unit internally into two units. What that does is you're required to have fifteen foot of separation between the units. So breaking up those buildings means that this western development side pushes out to the west an additional thirty feet. It encroaches more into the tree area. And I'll flip, so you can see one more time. That's our proposed, and that's how it shifts thirty feet to the west, kind of northwest. Breaking the units apart would decrease the tree save area down to about twelve percent, which we're proposing seventeen. It would also increase the amount of walls on-site, lengthen all utilities, increase the stormwater pond, add additional pavement, and increase the block sizes. It would also increase the amount of cut dirt on-site, and that equates to about ninety dump trucks, an additional ninety dump trucks of dirt coming off the property. Breaking the units apart is not a feasible option for this site, based on topo and other parameters. I think staff did mention about, on page four of the report, that section B says, "Project is not compatible with the character description, which calls for buildings to be oriented toward the street." We have addressed that by moving the buildings. Have a, that, this is the bigger block size, and that's the reduced green space on the modified plan, so. Lastly, the staff report mentions multiple times about inclusionary zoning along with introducing a variety of bedroom options. In one section, the report specifically states that the project could take advantage of inclusionary zoning, which provides incentives to include affordable housing options to very low and low-income households that will meet existing anticipated needs of those households. And while we agree, and we do agree, that inclusionary housing, inclusionary zoning and affordable housing options are needed, we feel that they are needed in correct locations. Every project is not a good location for that product type. This site is located outside of Loop Ten. It's not inside Loop Ten, it's outside Loop Ten. It's almost on the county boundary. There are no doctor's offices, there are no daycares, no grocery stores, no schools. There are no public amenities within reasonable walking or biking distance of this development. The only walkable restaurants within, the only restaurants within walking distance are higher-end restaurants across the county line in O'Conne. I mean, to us, this site is not a great location for very low or low-income households who may be relying predominantly on public transit transportation. The good thing is, there is a bus stop right across the road. But that's a long way to have to travel every time you need to go do something if you're relying on public transit. If you're not, or if you're trying to save money on gas. We feel the site is better served for young professionals, new families, or even grad students. It is ideally suited for those individuals who would work in O'Conne County but spend their income and tax dollars in Clark County and pull revenues back into this community. That's the easy thing. You have people living that may not, can't afford to live. There are not a lot of housing options for young professionals in O'Conne County. Therefore, they live here, work in O'Conne, bring their tax dollars back, spend it in this community. We think that's a benefit. The developer is here tonight, Mr. Blake Underwood. I'll yield my time to him. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Blake Underwood. I live at one sixty Stanton Way in Athens. I want to touch on a few of the comments that we received a couple of months ago, and I understand where those were coming from. I don't think we did a good job showing you some of these things initially, and I want to bring that before you today with some pictures and renderings to address some of those thoughts. First, the plan did not give a sense of community or home is something that we heard. I submitted a few pictures and renderings to help. You see the townhomes from phase one, you know, right here. So just give you some live images. These are basically what we're looking to do again in phase two. We already have a clubhouse, a fire pit, and hammocks under the restored water tower, pool, fitness center, meeting rooms, dog park, sandbar at the creek, nature trails. We're adding an interconnection for the two phases, a pickleball court in phase two, and another dog park. Another comment was regarding how phase one did not pay homage to the old mill. We really didn't have a lot to work with from the mill. It was in total disrepair. However, we did our best by using materials from the mill where possible. You know, I'll show you here, this is inside the clubhouse at the conference room. We use wood from the mill to make this accent wall. That table was made out of wood from the mill. These are ground stones that come out of the mill, which is used at the front entrance sign. There's one on each side of the entrance, and we probably wouldn't use more of those to create the second one. Did I get another three minutes in a second, as a speaker sharing time? Well, I didn't know he was gonna use it all.
I think that... What?
Typically, the applicant is ten minutes.
Yes.
He has a two-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, so we'll stop you here. You'll have a two-minute rebuttal, and we'll, we can call you up and usually do for further clarification about stuff.
He was supposed to use four or five minutes.
All right, thank you for... At this time, we will take public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to speak in favor of this application? Step up to the podium.
Mr. S, thanks for your time this evening. My name is Jeff Kuhn at twenty twenty-five South Millich Avenue with the applicant. So we're proud to present this as essentially phase two of Puritan Mill Development, which is, I do want to point out, one of the most popular, highly, one of the most highest-rated, bad English, highest-rated communities in really all of Athens. Almost five stars on Google. People love to live there, it's well-kept, well-maintained. And we hope to continue that success with phase two. The goal of the development is to provide additional, much-needed quality housing in an area appropriate for such housing. Meets the county's goal of expanding housing availability without encroaching on traditional neighborhoods. Do know the current use is already allowed in the current zoning. We're merely asking for an increase in density. And by granting this request, we'd be able to overcome considerable costs from the topography, which is mentioned in the staff report. Take a responsibility for the maintenance of Puritan Lane, which right now, no one else uses. We're offering to provide public access and parking at our cost for the county-owned land directly behind the property. Right now, it's landlocked, no one can access it. This will allow it to be a public park for everyone's use. We're offering the existing homes on-site to the county at no additional cost. And we are providing a diverse mix of four different floor plans in the development across the two phases. We feel the request is fitting, given that all adjacent properties are zoned for multiple family, and the nearby Linden Lane development has actually granted RM3 zoning not too long ago. It's infill location, minimize extending sewer and water lines and public infrastructure, again, saving the county on maintenance costs. Property is well-connected. Again, we mentioned the bus stop across the street, but there's walking trails adjacent to the site. There's retail restaurants just a couple of blocks away. Essentially, this, in our mind, represents an organic way to make a mixed-use node very naturally. So we look forward to your feedback, and we like this project, and we hope that you do as well, and we welcome any comments and feedback. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here from the public to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone else here from the public to speak in favor of this application? Is there any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this application? And walk on up one at a time. Please remember, state your name, address, and the nature of your interest.
All right, Jason and Karen Corrigan, ten ten Macon Highway. That's my property. I think I mentioned this last time on the upper right. So I appreciate this new entrance. I think this is a much better proposal. But this is our south corridor. Like fifteen years ago, when you came into Athens, what'd you drive on that? Trees. It was beautiful. Now we want to drive and on the roads, you want to put townhomes and apartments right there. So I kind of disagree with that. It's we're becoming a modern city, not a classic city here. I fell in love with that property. We planted all kinds of blueberry plants, trees, flowers were horticulturalists. But now I'm just feeling like in Athens, we're getting pushed out. This, there's no reason. I didn't have a vehicle for two years. Okay, I took transportation every day. Not a problem. I grew up north where that's all we did was take transportation, subway, this and that. So that's no excuse. We have plenty of places to rent. They're just all very expensive. My daughter's been looking for six months, and there's nowhere to be found. We need affordable housing. I'm all about that, and I support that. But the tree canopy, what worries me is erosion and grading. You got a river over there, a river on the other side. It's probably too late. I mean, we're spraying pesticides and all this and that. It's going in. It's almost a lost cause. Couple of years ago, I had bees. Now they travel about two, three miles. But I, they all died. I can't keep them alive anymore. And I think that's just from development from all over and pesticides and things. I think in twenty, thirty years is where we got to start thinking, right? What are we gonna face for development then? Maybe it'll be too late because we just, you know, hey, in the loop, let's just take all the trees down and just put barns. You know, it doesn't make sense to me. It's great to have the trailway, but I just have some concerns here. Let me see what else I got. I didn't really plant it tonight. I do believe staff did a great job, so I appreciate that. Let me see. Also with the trees, if you're gonna put trees in, and you put one height tree, that's not good enough. You need a variety of trees for different animals. We are not paying attention. We had bears on our properties, deer, and where are they gonna go? Running in the streets, accidents. Some people may die from it, you know? We've got to start thinking about everything, nature and each other. I'm not opposed to the development, but I think they probably are trying to maximize their profits where I think it needs to be a little more thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Please step up. All right. Well, with that, we will allow the applicant two minutes for rebuttal. You would like it?
Guess that kind of worked out. That point no more. I don't know how to pull it back up. He's doing. Okay, so I just wanted to basically point out a few things that we've done in the development, paying homage to the old mill and show what we have as far as making this community and home feel. All right, I was speaking about the the wood inside the clubhouse, furniture made out of the wood, out of the mill. You can see, you know, this is the lobby area of the clubhouse where we have the ping pong fitness center, you know, there. Sandbar with the, you know, historic dam there with the iconic waterfall. Couple of images are not loading there, but can't remember where they were. This one was sitting under the water tower that we restored, which we had to go to great lengths and, you know, cost a ton of money to keep that feature where it was and build around that massive structure. There's a fire pit underneath there. That's what the people are sitting around. Hammock garden under that as well. You'll see here is wood that we used at the pool area on the building. Those are beams out of the mill. You know, finally, you know, one of the other big concerns was the tree canopy, and I think Justin hit on that pretty well, you know? Yes, we are asking for a waiver to go down from twenty five to seventeen percent, but we are wanting to plant back more than, more than that to cover that at sixty percent total cover. We're good with all the leisure services requests and the crosswalk going across Macon Highway. I think Justin touched on the, you know, changing the, which is part of the leisure services request going down the contours. That's fine. I think, you know, adding that waiver request on the block sizes due to two different ways of, you know, two different means of math there, probably, if you will. Instead of us grading more, needing more tree canopy waiver, let's just drop the sidewalk. We're donating the parking and the access, so it's a win-win for everybody. So really, at the end of the day, I think the real question is density. Do you want more housing stock in this area? Do we need more housing in Athens? RM one and this product type and design, townhomes, is allowed by right. We are asking for a modest increase to RM two. The community has shown us the answer is yes, by filling up phase one, which has brought our expansion about. RM two is in compliance with the future land use map and definitely in line with what has been done in the area recently. Wood loan is RM two, Linden Lane is RM three zoning, both developments at the intersection of Lumpkin and Macon Highway. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will support our project like the community has over the last two years.
Thank you. And with that, public comment is closed. No further public comment on this issue, no further questions from the audience. Let's bring it behind the rail. Does anyone want to start us off? Alex?
I just wondered, I got the projects wrong when I mentioned the disclosure. This is the project that the developer reached out to me. We communicated. I said I was not able to discuss this project. He professionally said, okay, and that was that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So. I appreciate the staff report, and I think I mostly agree with it. I think the it may surprise some people in the room to hear me say this, but as much as I generally support increases in density because Athens badly needs more housing, I do have some concerns here. The current zoning for this, these parcels would allow, by my calculation, about one hundred and fifty one bedrooms, and the requested rezone gives a fifty percent bump up to two hundred and seven bedrooms. And the important thing to me is that our code allows the applicant to do that unilaterally without coming to us for approval or going through a discretionary process simply by opting into our voluntary inclusionary zoning program. They can get a fifty percent density bonus in RM one in exchange for providing the public benefit of a small number of relatively affordable housing units. So all the effort and money that has gone into this essentially, to me, amounts to asking for the density bonus without providing the public benefit that our inclusionary zoning ordinance gives them the opportunity to provide. As I say, increasing density is generally great. We need housing really badly. There are often trade offs. There are trade offs here. One of those is a loss of canopy. They're saying, you know, to put in two hundred and twenty seven bedrooms, we have to get a waiver down from twenty five down to seventeen percent of conserve canopy. That's not insignificant, but if we were getting a public benefit in the form of them having opted into inclusionary zoning, I would feel like, well, there's a trade off, you know, I'm willing to give up some trees for some affordable units. Staff recommended breaking up some of the buildings, and I heard that Mr. Greer say, if we do that, it shrinks the canopy even more. But of course, that's premised on two hundred and twenty seven bedrooms, right? It's only because they have an increased density in this proposal that breaking up the units encroaches further into the tree canopy area. So when he said that breaking up is not feasible here because of topo, that's only true if the increased density is granted. And again, that's something that I would certainly be inclined to support if the applicant had chosen to opt into the inclusionary zoning. A couple of the other things, I don't really have a problem with the three acre lot, block size thing. I, you know, I heard what the applicant said about it's either two point nine seven or just over three, depending on if you go to the curb or the sidewalk. And so if it's three or three point oh two or whatever, it's, that doesn't really concern me. I appreciate the park access and the five dedicated parking spots for that. That sounds good. They do feel kind of hidden to me. I'm not sure that members of the public will generally know about them or feel welcome driving into this private development to go and park in the spots that are for part of the day supposedly reserved for citizens using the park, right? I'm not sure that people will be aware of them or feel comfortable with them. So I, you know, I think I would prefer if parks, if parking spaces for the park access were dedicated and were on land owned by Clark County, so that it could be, the park usage could be enforced. Those are minor points. Really, to me, it's just a request for significant density increase without providing the public benefit that our ordinance is contemplating or that sort of thing.
Any other thoughts, questions?
So this, listening to the gentleman was in the neighborhood. And I had mentioned in the last meeting, this, this used to be the road to Oconee County. This is, that's how you got to Oconee County, pretty much. From anywhere, center of Athens or not, you didn't have all these other bridges. You could go way out toward where the mall is and get over. That's bridge had a way. But this was, this was how you got to that part of Oconee. Going back to the mill, and again, it's my preservation blood in me, I guess, but this, this was a nice mill area. I knew it as a kid that it was a mill area. I knew the houses were mill oriented. I, mill used to function, made ski rope. I was a water skier. Thought that was cool. The mill's gone, and it was more than likely unable to be saved. I'm not arguing the demolishing of that. But, and I appreciate the good work they did to bring in some of those mill boards and items and the extra work they did for the water tank. But I, the reflection, the current project is there, it's there, is not a strong reflection that that was an old mill. And this mimics the current project that is already up. And it's, it's no use to make it mimic the mill more because it's not even owned that property. But we're getting rid of those mill houses, which they can rightfully do. Somebody could just go in and probably demo them. They're not protected, so there's nothing we can do to protect them. But the project would more than likely at least fit the area, as Matt said. And I'm becoming Mr. Don't Go to RM two from RM one guy, it feels like, but, and we need the density. Future land use is full of the need of density. It's been pounded in my head of how important that is. But fifty percent more, that number that I brought up last meeting over another project, it just adds. And so fifty percent less of that, or actually it would only be thirty three percent less than what we're seeing down would lighten the area up and not just like a massive apartment structure. If I understand, and if I can ask Bruce, by right, they can build apartments. If they didn't have any waivers and they were good with RM one, they can build apartments, correct? And they just go in and do it. They just work out the details with y'all. They're not coming before us or the mayor and commission. So they have a right for the apartments, and I think apartments are fun. It's disappointing the houses have to go, and I do want to make it clear removing those houses and putting them somewhere else kills the history of the house. It's over. They're just old wooden houses at that point. What makes those houses valuable is that they are the mill houses that were built around a mill. You move them out to anywhere else, and they're no longer historic. They're old houses, and so let's keep that. But I appreciate that they're willing to at least try to do that because that is a good effort. And, and I will say, and I always like to try to end on a positive. No, this developer is a good developer. The developments around town, I mean, you can spot them. I don't, when I'm talking to anyone that might live in them, they enjoy them. They're run, they're well built, they look nice. No issue with this developer, and I want to see them do more development in town. My thought is, though, we're just packing them in there a little bit, and for that part of the neighborhood, that stretch of Macon Highway.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, I'll just sort of reiterate. I appreciate the point that you made, Matt, and I just want to make sure I understand it because I think it's really important is what you're saying that now have a provision or code that would allow this density, but in return for that density would have to be some affordability. Is that more or less right?
Yes, that's exactly right. It's our voluntary inclusionary zoning program, which the developer can opt into, and they don't need any discretionary approval. They can just take an RM one parcel and build twenty four bedrooms per acre by opting into that rather than sixteen, which is the underlying.
Yes, and in some ways, it's a great example of what that ordinance was intended to do would be if you're going to give a bit from the standpoint of the community, then you also then get some affordability. Great. That's, I just want to agree with that. I think that's a great point.
I have a question for staff. There's an issue in here with the conserve canopy requirement that I have never seen before. I'm curious about it. Which is areas dominated by these invasive species are not eligible for tree canopy cover credit. Someone who is more knowledgeable about trees than I am. Is it, is it feasible or just a huge, a huge lift to make those areas no longer be dominated by kudzu or Chinese privet? Like, could the developer hypothetically increase their conserve canopy by removing the invasive species, or is that just a lost cause?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That's, that's, that's super interesting to me. Thank you. That is just, I think, an important other piece of information to keep in mind. I do think it's interesting, and I'll keep this very brief. The, the, especially about Puritan Mill, the discussion about this is the road to Oconee County really hinges on the idea of the value of this parcel as a view from your car. And I just, I think it's, I'm not making a value judgment on that at this time. I think it's important to put that out there. Like when people say, and the applicant's description of the, of, you know, saving the wood from the mill and how they incorporated the mill into the building, I thought illustrated this really in a really interesting way. They said, oh, we are keeping the mill alive. We are keeping the history of the mill alive, but it's inside the building where you can't see it from your car. Which they didn't say, but that's the disconnect that I immediately noticed. Like, that's, people aren't complaining that you didn't do anything to preserve the mill. They're complaining that they can't see it from their car. So I don't have a vote on this. I think the discussion has been great. I just wanted to make that explicit. I think the discussion has been great. I just wanted to make that explicit. If that's something we value, I think we should make it explicit.
I had a question.
Yeah.
Talking about the inclusionary zoning issue of this property. When we're talking about developers, the applicant mentioning that this is not an area that you would have access to services and things like that, what, what is our overall goal? We're talking about adding inclusionary zoning into developments or are there developments from the county's perspective or planning's perspective that are better or worse or make more sense for inclusionary zoning? I kind of want to go back to that because I thought that was interesting, a sense of what take is on that.
Yeah. So geographically, the zones that are eligible to participate in the inclusionary zoning program are in areas that are either more suburban or urban in character. So our, our end zones, our commercial downtown zone, those are zones where you, you have the option for that inclusionary zoning activity. We don't have an option for single family residential zoning. We don't have an option presently for AR. So, so the way the, the program is set up, the zoning categories that are eligible for it are in those areas that tend to be in higher density or have access to services, have, have the opportunity for infrastructure, at least if not immediately adjacent, at least close, close by. So that locational aspect, I think, was anticipated with the zones that we were targeting to be eligible for the voluntary program in the first place. I would just add to that, that as a member of the committee that drafted that ordinance, the, you know, the zones that are eligible are all of our commercial zones and all of our R M zones. Those R M zones are scattered all over the county, right? And there was no discussion of some R M one being better than others. It's just there, you know, there's R M one all over the county. Regarding the developers' comments on that, I would point out there's restaurants that are walkable to this. Yeah, they're over the county line there, but they're, you know, a couple hundred yards away. There, so there's jobs, there's restaurants, there's offices, there's barber shops and retail stores and so on in a development that's very close to this. Also, it's well served by transit. So I, I don't buy the, the comment that this is a bad site for affordable housing. I think any site that's a, you could say the same thing about this being a bad site for housing generally, right? I mean, any site that's appropriate for housing, I think, under the inclusionary zoning ordinance is appropriate for affordable housing. Because people of, you know, modest incomes need housing in all the same places that people with greater incomes need housing. You can have a car and need affordable housing. Absolutely true. Yeah. So.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna add, pulling this up, did 80% AMI is $45,000 a year for a single person. $58,000 a year for a family of three is the population that owns cars in Athens, Clark County.
Yeah, yeah. And I was, my only comment was gonna be, I think a lot of my points have already been said and, you know, it, like, I do think that this would be a, a good place for inclusionary housing and yeah, it seems like the increase in density is really only to serve, you know, the developers and doesn't really have a whole lot of public good. And I hate to see the, any sort of reduction in conserve canopy. Yep, that's it.
Right. Anyone want to make a motion? Someone make a motion?
I move to deny the.
Okay, motion to recommend denial. Is there a second? Anyone get a vote?
Seconded it.
Very good.
Motion to recommend denial. Please. Beresford. Paul.
Yes.
Laffer.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Lord.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to our first item of new business. We have a staff report, 585 Vine Street.
And commissioners. For 585 Vine Street, 1 through 5, 2025, oh, seven, thirteen, fifty-one.
We can't hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you speak up?
Oh, I can drive it. The applicant has requested amendment to the binding site plan associated with the existing PD on 585 Vine Street. The Triangle Plaza located at 585 Vine Street and 121 Oakland Avenue is an existing retail spaces. The intended amendment is so that 585 Vine Street can be redeveloped into an educational teaching kitchen with a community garden space. Proposed changes to the building at this time. And this is the PD exhibit for both lots that currently make up the existing PD. The bottom portion on the, on the south end is the subject parcel under discussion tonight. There is no proposed changes to the top portion along Nellie B. The subject property is made up of five separate parcels and is about 0.53 acres in total. The surrounding area is all residential with some retail making up the Nellie B Avenue portion of the PD. The future land use map dictates such a surrounding area as more, uh, main street business with mixed city residential and traditional neighborhoods surrounding the subject parcels. The, due to the compatibility, there's no request by the applicant to change the future land use map for this specially apartment. And I think I was switched. This is the proposed zoning. The surrounding area is on commercial neighborhood, government and single family residential or multifamily residential. Similarly to the future land use, there is no request to alter the zoning of the property. This is the proposed site plan showing the changes in impervious coverage and parking lot configurations. They are proposing a decrease in impervious coverage as well as a proposed layout for the community garden along the west side of the lot. This picture is a front view of the entire subject parcel from the corner of Nellie B and Vine Street. Overall, staff finds the request compatible with the 2020 comprehensive plan by creating publicly available and excessively gathering, accessible gathering spaces within neighborhoods. Staff also finds the request compatible with the future land use and zoning map. Staff recommends approval and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Buck Bacon. I'm with 78 Engineering. We're located at 355 Oakley Street here in Athens, Georgia. And I'm here speaking on behalf of the applicant, the East Athens Wellness Experience and Farm to Neighborhood. This is one of those projects that, that kind of makes you feel good. We're proud of Rashi and the team that has directed and guided the vision for the redevelopment of this site. I thank you for I just dove right in. And we're honored to be able to present this project to you this evening. We are asking for your approval to the amended plan development being presented tonight. Next slide. So the original plan development was approved in 1996. That included both 151 Nellie B Avenue and 585 Vine Street. 151 Nellie B is the parcel to the north. 585 is the parcel to the south. We're asking for an amendment to just the portion of the PD that our client owns, 585 Vine Street. That is a portion of PD in the south. Excellent. This is an image of the existing site. Next. And then the proposed PD, as staff noted, reduces the impervious lot coverage by reconfiguring the existing parking areas and reducing a driveway cut along Nellie B Avenue and incorporating new porous pavers to manage water quality and runoff reduction. The improvements include more defined sidewalks along all street frontages, new street trees, long areas. And we're also proposing a community garden at the western corner of the site. Uh, this is just a rendering. Next slide. This project also includes some interior renovations, converting the current space to a teaching kitchen and classroom. And just want to tell you guys, thank you for, for considering this. We're super excited about the project that it will bring to the block. We respectfully request your support of PD. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. Is there any member of the public here who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening. Appreciate being here tonight. My name is Amy Cassane and I live at 526 Highland Avenue in Athens. I'm here in my capacity as the Corporate Citizenship Coordinator for Better Communities Collaborative and WA Engineering. And I want to express my strong support for this amendment. I'll echo Buck in saying that this is one of those projects that has been very exciting to be a part of. I first became involved with Rashi and Farm to Neighborhood in the fall of 2022, when our company offered to help with the grant application to fund improvements at this property as a way to expand Farm to Neighborhood's program. I worked with Rashi in her board and we submitted the grant application in November of, of 2022. The grant was awarded in May of '23 and since that time, I've been responsible on a pro bono basis for, with the company for grant management. So we've been working with Rashi on that. One of the exciting things about working on this grant was getting to know more about Farm to Neighborhood and Rashi. And working to develop a project concept that would align with that nonprofit's mission, their mission to create a community where everyone has access to delicious, nutritious and affordable food choices. Two of the ways that Farm to Neighborhood fulfills that mission right now is through their Senior Fresh and Healthy Youth Programs. The Healthy Youth Program is an educational one that empowers youth to cook, grow and thrive. And Senior Fresh provides seniors living in low income areas with fresh produce. Farm to Neighborhood has also cultivated a network of local and minority farmers who help them provide nutrition based services to low income adults, families and seniors. Getting back to the grant, the stated, the stated goal of the grant program that we looked at was, I quote, funded investments in naval features, including parks, recreation facilities, sidewalks and healthy food access as a way to improve physical and mental health outcomes. It was grew out of the COVID vaccine or grew out of the COVID pandemic was part of the reason for this grant being started. That was a perfect fit for what Farm to Neighborhood was doing and wanted, how they wanted to expand their program. So the grant was in the amount of $965,000 and it, the funding, it will create, as Buck mentioned, a teaching kitchen and a community garden. And that community garden will include green space where neighborhood families can recreate and space for outdoor education activities centered on wellness along with a community garden. So the combination of these improvements will increase Farm to Neighborhood's capacity to address food insecurity and offer educational programming around nutritional, nutrition and healthy eating. Coincidentally, both of those things are very important in helping and having a positive impact on health issues such as high blood pressure and obesity. The project has been abandoned, the East Athens Wellness Experience, and its ultimate goal is to become a wellness hub, supporting the health and wellness of the community, especially the East Athens community. And I really do believe that this is just a great project. It will result in significant improvements to the Triangle Plaza. You know, it's just in terms of physically, it'll be great for that area. And it's very in line with the stated goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan. So the first step to realizing this vision is its approval tonight. And so I hope that you will do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
He says such a wonderful job. I can be really quick. My name is Janine Labuzon-Delain. I represent 100 Woodstone Drive here in Athens and I'm in the capacity today in three different roles. One, I am a recruitment coordinator for the University of Georgia SNAP Ed program, where I've been for 10 years advocating and building our partnerships throughout the state in regards to helping low income families and communities get access to nutrition education around their efforts to try to fight the obesity and high blood pressure and all the, you know, isms that we have throughout the state of Georgia. And then secondly, that brought me into my role as a board chair for Farm to Neighborhood in its conception. Just knowing Rashi from the community and talking about her interest to want to mitigate food insecurity here locally and taking the experience of what I know, not just for Clark County, but throughout the state and the barriers that are also faced when you have those efforts of good intention. And we were able to kind of give birth to what Farm to Neighborhood has become today. I'm proud to say that even with all, without the beauty and aesthetics and all the great things this project is going to bring forth for our Athens community, we're doing the work. And that's what I'm really excited about in regards to hitting the community on the ground, even without the grant, it wasn't even in place yet, but where we were already serving families and providing nutrition, educational support and doing all the great work that's needed, you know, just to show that you're committed to the, the task, if you will. And then when this grant came, you know, forth, it was a great opportunity to just try to go for it and see what happens. And we're real excited about the outcome and the support that we have been getting locally for this particular effort. Unfortunately, the program that I'm representing with the University of Georgia SNAP Ed will be closing our grant this end of September as far, for, for much of what we understand. Our program funding was cut where we definitely had anticipated to be a very strong arm of nutrition education for this project. However, you know, we still have connection to other resources that we definitely will support the classroom efforts that this project will avail for the community and helping youngsters in their efforts. You know, we still have our extension services where we'll be able to still access even from that capacity, nutrition education for those youngsters through our 4H and things like that. And we'll still make sure we can pull in other resources for the adult programming that we did anticipate to also be able to render in this environment. However, again, we are still excited to be a partnership for the long-term vision of what this project, you know, will be bringing forth. And we do hope that we can consider all of you all tonight on a good thumbs up and voting for us to bring, able to bring this project forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? And, and you can just, you can just step on up after the next person steps back. You don't even have to wait for me to ask.
My name is Mildred White. I live at 260 Nellie B Avenue, Athens, Georgia. And I'm here, I'm, I wasn't familiar with what was being proposed for that area. And I'm right up the street from it. And I think it's a very, very good idea. And my only concern is we need transparency and make sure that the grant money is used for what it's designed for. And I've lived in this community for a while and I've seen a lot of grant money come through, but I've seen not enough done with the grant money. I have no objection to this. It's a beautiful plan. And we need it in that community because we do have a lot of young people that need these services. But the only thing I want to address is that the grant money is being used for those purposes where we can see some action in East Athens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lily Daniel Taylor and I am part owner of property at 230 Nellie B Avenue, which is going to be right at the back of the proposed project. We are, my mom and I are first time homeowners there. I think I was going to the 10th grade when they were able to purchase the land known as the Pine subdivision. In those 60 some years, 50, late 50s or 60 some years that's been there, there's been a lot of things going on. It started off as an excellent neighborhood, soon changed, but that's life. What my concerns are now is that 35 years ago, I'm a parent of a son that was murdered there. What my concerns are now is that, uh, thirty-five years ago, I'm a parent of a, uh, son that was murdered there. But we chose to stay, my mom and dad, living at the time, chose to continue to live there. It's not where you live, but it's how you live. So with the upcoming, I'm like, um, Mrs. White here, I have a concern. There's been a lot of talk, cause thirty-some years ago, which most of you probably weren't even born, um, there were changes made on the, on the block, and, uh, things began to happen. But it was only after twenty or thirty-some children were killed over there. It began to change, and those changes took place, uh, and even a police precinct was, uh, precinct was built. All of that worked real for a while, but what hindered it? Now you're still ducking and dodging. My mom, who's ninety-three years old, said that's home, and that's where she wants to be. What are we going to see as valid? Is, education is good, but what happens when you're calling 911? And there's some firemen here, wanna get permission, uh, police sets before they come in. We're looking for change. What that change is gonna be is gonna depend on the people that's been elected to look out for the welfare of whatever area that you are responsible for. A lot of people, as myself, didn't know about it, but I know that in reaching a goal, it's gonna work for everyone and not for a personal benefit. And I'm not saying that's what, what it is, but it looks like, uh, with everything changing back like it was thirty-some years ago, the, uh, lottering and all of that, uh, in that area, nothing has changed. It needs change, but let that change be in a positive way that we can say that without a doubt, progress has been made, or was.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of or in favor of this application?
Hi, hi, my name is Evelyn Blutsa. I don't live in the area now, but I own four pieces of property in the area. Three pieces of property in the area, 229, 227, and I think it's 4, 233. And my son lives there, in the area. He never, we left, but he never wanted to leave, and he went back. And I have two grandchildren, a daughter-in-law that live on Vine Street. My husband is a pastor on Nellie B., right up the street. Up there, and we don't get grants, but we feed every month. We, to the pandemic, we opened up our doors, picked up two van loads, or three, brought them to the church, fed them, gave them a bag of food. And we still bag food up once a month and take it out. They respect us in that neighborhood. The church was broken in for the first time last week, thirty-five years. But the people in the neighborhood, I went and walked and talked to them. I know y'all didn't do it, but if you know anybody did it, come and let us know. And they say, yes, Ms. Blutsa, because we are respected in that neighborhood. I have children that grew up there. My husband used to go there, drink, and buddy, but he got called a priest, so he don't go up there. But we still go down there. Every month, we're down there, passing out bag, talking to the people. My children grew up with most of those people, and they know me as Ms. Blutsa, and they respect me.
Thank you. Any other public comment in support of this application?
Good evening. Um, my name is Rashi Malcolm. Um, I'm at 135 Thomas Lane. Um, I actually, um, have a lot of interest in representation. One, as the owner of 585 Vine Properties, which owns the, the property, um, on this side, the two lots in the back and, uh, half the parcel on the opposite side of the Nellie B. Avenue. Um, I'm also the, um, founder, um, director of Farm to Neighborhood, as well as a tenant on the property as the owner of Rashi's cuisine. Um, I was hoping I didn't have to get up and speak, so my voice is kind of cracky, cause I'm nervous. Um, this project, um, and what we do with Farm to Neighborhood, as our president had stated, um, you know, we did long before this grant came about. And even when we talked about food insecurity and the work that needs to be done in Athens, um, you know, we started actually on the west side where we were originally. And then, you know, we continued to work on the east side. We actually still work all over the, the county and even outside of Athens. This project, when that grant came available, it was, it was crazy, cause as Amy stated, we kind of was like, okay, we'll apply for this, but we really didn't think we were gonna get it. So when we got it, we were like, whoa, okay, this is really happening. We support a youth program called Healthy Youth, where we teach youth about economics, and we teach them in ways through service, manufacturing, and agriculture. We teach them that there are so many ways that you can make money. And even if you don't want to be in the food pipeline, you can take a lot of those soft skills that you learn and be able to go into other industries, which still work with food. You know, if you're a biologist, a chemist, you know, pharmaceuticals, you wanna, you know, design clothes, you know, whatever the case may be. So with this project, this allows us to reach out to other nonprofits and other organizations as well to help them teach, um, their participants about soft skills. We've heard from individuals who deal with foster care students who age out of the system, who don't know how to, you know, cook or clean, the, this kitchen will allow them the opportunity to do that. This teaching garden is not just about another community garden just set up in a community. We're teaching people how to fish. We're teaching people how to plant and grow from their own homes. And if they want to be able to have their own garden at their house to beautify the space that they live in, then they'll be able to learn those skills here. And we also need to have more community spaces that are focused on the entire nucleus of the family, not just partying at night, and not just for the kids, something that we all can be able to take advantage of. So I hope that you can continue to support this, and I thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this application? All right, is there any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. Uh, I think no rebuttal is needed. Yes. And with that, uh, public comment is closed. We will, we get behind the rail. Um, and I just want to start us off with a quick question to staff. So, uh, in the, in the, uh, application and in the slideshow, we got, um, a little more in this application, there's a lot of interior renderings, a lot of seeing what the, what the, what the learning kitchen would look like, what the floor plan on the inside would look like. Correct me if I'm wrong, nothing on the inside of that building is relevant to us, right? Okay, uh, so just to kind of make clear to us and to the public, what is the scope of our discussion here? Um, uh, as important as, uh, transparency with grants is, um, and how, and worthy of discussion, for sure, that is also not, we are not involved with the grant. Um, we can't dictate whether or not this, uh, this, this comes to fruition. Our vote of recommendation is, should this be allowed to be built? This thing that is on the screen right there. So just clarifying for everyone in the audience, and if you're thinking, why are they talking about this other thing? This is the scope of our discussion? Is this a good amendment to the existing plan development so that it can look like that? That being said, would anyone here like to open up the discussion?
Um, could I just start with a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion from anyone? Yep, no.
Just want to say that this is a fantastic program, and I've seen over the years the work that Rashi has done in the community, how passionate she is, and I wish we could make a million more of her and a million more of this type of program all over Athens.
And, uh, Sarah, did you have anything to add as a maker of the motion, I think it's proper?
I, I would second what she said. I think it's great.
All right, so your hand.
Yeah, I agree with what Jen said. Uh, don't have anything to add to that.
Great.
She walks the walk.
Love, love all around. Any further comment? Yes.
I just wanted to reiterate some of the key things that I heard. Uh, and I do have to kind of question if it applies, because it does apply. I think when we talk about future land use and how we use the land that we are responsible for, this, this covers several bases, um, particularly around functionality, cultural development, and optimizing existing space by creating educational platforms for that community and a community that needs it so much. Um, one of the things that stood out to me, uh, is multi-generational impacts. There are lots of different age groups that live in that space that need to be positively impacted.
And hope needs to be reinstilled, and so to me, that is a part of the decisions that we make with regards to neighborhood development.
All right, Alex.
Removing asphalt, putting in a garden, sounds like a good idea.
Ready to vote? Okay, Stephen, I mean, do your poll, I just, not break the tradition.
Motion to approve.
Please.
Yes.
Barrett.
Paul?
Yes.
Popper?
Yes.
Fans?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Got another one.
What we got next?
Good evening, commissioners. Up next is 480 South Milledge Avenue, it's a special use, SUP 2025-071361. The request is for a special use permit in commercial office, the Milledge Avenue corridor overlay for a sorority. The, the applicant proposes to demolish the front building on the property closest to Millage Avenue and construct a new building for assembly space in its place for that sorority. They propose to reconfigure and add five additional parking spaces. The new assembly space building would be two stories tall with a basement, and they would be converting existing rear apartments into sorority housing. Nine variances were requested. One was determined to be unnecessary, so I'll go into that in a second. Right, this is our parcel here, subject parcel here. And you can see the parcel is, um, on Milledge Avenue here. And then down here in this area is Baxter, Baxter Streets, we are close to that intersection. This parcel here is a single-family home on the left, and another sorority here next to it on the right. Well, as a youth ministry, Young Life here to the back left. And then the, um, Clark Central High School is here at the back, right up next to it. Right, this parcel is future land use, um, is mixed in spiritual, and that would not change. Puzzles. Um, current zoning is CO, commercial office in this Milledge Avenue overlay. That's what the hashing represents, as well as, um, in our local historic district on Milledge Avenue. And those zoning would just be same zoning, but with that special use permit on top. This is a view of the front of the property, that is the building that would be demolished in the front yard that faces Milledge Avenue. On the left here shows that single-family home that's on the left side of the parcel. And then on the right there is that sorority house that's on the right side of this subject parcel. These photos show some of the variance requests that we're looking into. So top left shows, um, that retaining wall that, take a look at, uh, upright shows that drive aisle and the width of it. And sort of same for the bottom two photos showing the drive aisle. From different views from different parts of the parcel. And then this photo shows that back of the property and this side here being the vegetative screening that, um, separates the parcel from the high school in the back. Right, so these are the nine requested variances. Variance A is a variance from section nine, ten, three to increase the maximum lot coverage from 65% to 79.3%. That is a variance that staff did not see justification to support. Variance B from section nine dash ten dash three to increase the minimum landscaped area from 35% to 20.7%. Variance staff did not see justification to support. Variance C is a variance from section nine dash twelve dash seven to increase the maximum floor-to-area ratio within the Milledge Avenue Special District overlay from 0.5 to 0.65. That also did not find justification to support that variance. Variance D is from section nine dash fifteen dash thirteen to allow retention of a 32-inch-tall retaining wall within a vision clearance area allowing, that was only 30 inches in height. And staff also did not find justification to support that variance. Um, variance E was section, from section nine dash fifteen dash thirteen to allow driveways not compliant with section seven dash two. That is the variance that staff found to be not applicable since Milledge Avenue is a state right-of-way subject to GDOT standards. Variance F, the variance from section nine dash twenty dash two A two to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 154, that is the assembly number, uh, 235. That was another variance that staff did not find justification to support. Variance G is a variance from section nine dash thirty dash nine B three to allow retention of the one-way drive aisles of approximately 11 feet width instead of 12 feet. That is another variance that staff did not find justification to support. Variance H is a variance from section nine dash thirty dash nine E six B to allow no additional screening at the rear of the parking area adjacent to Clark Central High School. That variance staff did find justification to support, and that is our, our one we support. Um, and then variance I is from section eight dash seven dash fifteen J fifteen to allow 21 continuous parking spaces without a tree island instead of a maximum of 14 continuous spaces. And that is a variance that staff did not find justification to support. All right, so this is our existing site. Showing Milledge Avenue here on the right, and here on the back is where it meets up with Clark Central. And showing here where the drive aisle comes through and the, the alleyway that is, or the alley drive that is just, um, 11 feet wide. There's parking here along the back between, um, the high school and the parcel. And then the alley here is used to drive down to Baxter Street. And you can use that alleyway that connects from, actually, this parcel here where the sorority is, goes down through behind that Young Life building and then to Baxter Street. And then parking along here for these apartment buildings and then out onto Milledge. And then this rectangle here is representing the building that would be demolished. The site plan is our proposed site plan. Uh, we've labeled the areas where the variances are requested. So um, at the, I guess, the whole site shows your lot coverage and landscaped area. And then the red area here is represented for that floor area ratio building that is proposed and then to be built after the original one is demolished. And our yellow here is representing the vision clearance area from this retaining wall that is higher than typically allowed. And our green all along here is that drive width that is one foot off of what is normally required. And then the purple is the tree island that is 21 spaces instead of usually 14. So in regard to the variance, variances, staff supports variance H regarding the elimination of the requirement of additional screening at the rear of the subject property. All other variances do not meet the five criteria to justify granting the variance approval. And so our staff recommendation is for denial. Staff found that the proposal is partially compatible with the 2023 comprehensive plan. Retention and redevelopment of the existing structures for the apartments is compatible. That reduction in housing units though, that that would be available to the general public. If not, those housing units would then be only used for the sorority itself. So be available to the general public. And I do find that it is compatible with the future land use maps. That this makes sense residential would continue to be. So that would be compatible with the zoning map. So there's no need to change there and generally compatible with the ordinance as well. And we did find that the proposal complies with the special use criteria as well. However, the lack of correction to the driveway width to allow fire apparatus access and the lack of provision for parking plans for those larger chapter meetings and events prevent staff from fully supporting the request in its current. For this project to be approved, however, staff recommends the following condition of approval. Be a direct sidewalk connection to be constructed from the front easternmost structure that one that is proposed to be demoted and rebuilt to the public sidewalk along Milletage Avenue. Let's conclude the staff report with the existing site plans.
Thank you.
Right, at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
I'll get this to go. Get your square away. One more, one more down. I want to leave the proposed up rather than the existing. I'm going to add the color in it.
You want to see your spot?
Well, that could be my second one. I want the other one that was the staff had prepared that had the location where all the variances were.
Let me know when you want that.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Brett Thurman. I'm an engineer with Armored Chalk Muthini Thurman here in Athens, Georgia, 330 Research Drive. Um, I represent the applicant Alpha Z Delta. Sororities and fraternities face a difficult process to build in Athens Clark County. It is by design. The difficulty has increased as only so many areas are acceptable to ACC residents or where fraternities can locate. Over time, since the special use ordinance on sororities and fraternities was passed, the acceptable areas for these organizations have been mainly Milletage Avenues, Long Island Street and Downtown Zone. UGA also has self-fraternities on the UGA campus. The available properties all come with challenges to meet the requirements of Athens Clark County if we're dealing with a sorority or fraternity. I remember Tri Delta had two variances in 2006. That was the first one we ever did. Pi Capital Phi had three variances in 2014. Alpha Phi Omega, which was not my project, had um five variants proposed, all related to parking. I do not know which ones are approved and which ones are not. There was some modification I saw in what was built versus what was planned. So, but it started with five. Now we've come before you where we have right now nine proposed, really eight because one's not available, not not allowed because GDOT's in control of the entrance. But my point is that we believe we will continue to see mobile variances required for properties in any suitable location that we can locate a sorority house in Athens Clark County. Now I left the parking discussion out of my variance application, and that's my mistake. Rest assured, we will obtain a parking agreement with Clark Central High School. In fact, in our experience, we cannot get a building permit without first producing a signed parking agreement. We just recorded one for Delta Zeta for 41 spaces. Intend to approach the superintendent again for the 121 spaces that Alpha Z Delta will require to meet the total required number of spaces for assembly at 154. The Delta Zeta Parking Agreement was vetted and approved by the planning department, and it was recorded this month in the beginning of, yeah, excuse me, in the beginning of July. Uh, we'll still have the same terms and conditions in this parking agreement uh between Alpha Z Delta and uh CHS that's in with the one for Delta Zeta. This includes parking on Monday night from 5:00 to 6:30 for chapter meetings and parking at Clark Central High School for special events. Based on the number of parking spaces required at CCHS, this is a $33,500 investment every year. No wonder the school likes to enter into these agreements. It's a little extra cash flow to help them out. I propose nine variances and plan to determine that one was not needed. I'll take them in order based on staff's report, which listed them as A through I. Variances A, B, and C are related. A is an increase in impervious, B is a decrease in impervious, and C is an increase in FAR. The sorority believes the size of the sorority house that AMT has designed is the minimum requirements to fulfill their programming needs. It is probably feasible to get all programming in a three-story house with basement. However, the building height would go over the maximum allowed in the zone, which is 40 feet. This would reduce the impervious, but the FAR would still stay the same. Just put it in three floors instead of two. Furthermore, the scale of the chapter house would be out of proportion with nearby properties in this scenario as a three-story structure with a basement. For this reason, we propose a two-story house resulting in a 1,468 square foot increase of increased coverage. Staff noted in their FAR discussion that the basement area is not included in the, that that the basement area when not included in the FAR creates an FAR of .55. And with the basement underground, it is not contributing to the perceived bulk and scale of the building. And they go on a note, which is why FAR is considered in this zone. Variance D, retain wall. On further review, we will meet this requirement by reducing the wall height to meet the limit. Same time, we will bring the side retaining walls in to meet a new 12-foot driveway minimum. Therefore, if that's acceptable, the applicants does not need this variance. Variance E, staff determined that this was not necessary. And I note that we will work as GDOT as required, similar to what we did at Pi Capital Phi. So they, we did a, we did a radius in and they allowed us to go down below their, their minimum allowed to something smaller that would fit the urban's landscape there. Um, variance F, we will still require a variance to limit the number of parking on-site to 35 spaces. And again, we will obtain the 121 leased spaces for the Clark Central High School. In effect, the mayor and commission have repeatedly voted on projects that provide the number of bedrooms on the site and has park and off-site to meet with the other things. They they voted for this over and over again in our experience in all the ones we brought before you into mayor and commission. Um, variance G, we reviewed the plans that have made some adjustments to achieve a 12-foot drive aisle except for a few places where parapoles are located. Can can you pull up that other slide? So we looked at, and you can see in the red hash, can you pull it up a little bit so I can see all of it? There we go. So that is, the red indicates a 12-foot drive aisle that we're able to put into um the space here. So we can meet the 12-foot minimum. Uh, it makes it a little tight against the wall on the shared property line with the other sorority. And it also pushes down toward the, as staff noted, toward the the uh exit doors on the back. They have a, have a landing outside, but we can make it all fit. And uh, but again, we're going to have to remove a little more pervious areas in order to get that done. Because we're taking, we're taking out some pervious area on that, on that northern side of the property. The original increase of impervious over existing was three and a half percent with the plan we submitted. With with the, making the 12-foot drive aisle and also putting in a tree island as part of that, we go to 4.8% over existing. So that's how far we are over what's existing on the ground there. Uh, if this is acceptable, the applicant does not need this variance. We assume that this will alleviate some of the concerns of the fire marshal for fighting this fire, any type of emergencies there or fighting fires. Uh, variance H, planning supports this variance, and we agree with them. Uh, and variance I, I have determined that I can place nine parallel parking spaces instead of the eight shown down there below. If you look down at the bottom of the plan on the south side, there's three spaces and then a space where a tree encroaches a little bit into the parking. And then, and then five. And what I've been able to do is we, we, we put a, we put another parking space, parallel parking space where that tree is, probably lose that tree. But in the plan, um, right in the middle, there's a 21. It marks the number of parking spaces that are on that, on that side in the angle parking. And right to the right of that is where we'll put new tree island. And so that will cover, we won't need that variance then if that's acceptable. All right, to summarize, out of nine variances proposed, one was determined to not be needed. Three are not needed if we take the minor changes to the plan, but five are still required. Okay, uh, three of those are for the, three of those are for the pervious, pervious and FAR. And the, another is for parking, the parking agreement. And the last one is the uh 12-foot, I mean, meet the 12-foot drive aisle. So the variances for the, limit the number of parking spaces, 35 on-site. All right, at this time, I'd like to give my remaining time to David Muthini. He wants to just address the sorority house.
Thank you. David Muthini, architect with AMT. I'd like to reiterate that there are very few locations available for a relatively new sorority to have a presence in Athens. So therefore, we need your help in securing the use of this property for Alpha Z Delta. Clearly, we are working with a property that is fully built out, and we are trying to meet as many of the ordinances as possible while allowing three of the existing apartment buildings to remain in place rather than demolishing and demolishing them and needlessly filling up our landfills. If it had been possible, we would have used the street-facing building and remodeled. But the building was eight-foot ceilings and very limited square footage just doesn't cut it for sorority use. Designing a new building with full basement allows us to create dining rooms, chapter rooms, study rooms, house director suite, and handicap accessible bedrooms that are all required in today's sorority while being able to house residents at perfectly good existing apartment buildings. It's a win-win for this property. And I also want you to know that we have been through concept review with Historical Preservation Commission with no critical comments in our design. And in fact, we worked to pay homage to the character of the buildings already existing uh on this property.
That is your time.
Thank you. Please help us work this out.
Is there any member of the public here to speak in favor of this application? Is there any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this application? All right. With that, then, we will take this behind the rail. Uh, now, to get us started, to try to wrangle this very, very complicated we have the issue of the special use permit, which is just, did you want to, were you just waiting until I was done?
Um, if you like.
Okay, um, then yes, I will continue. Uh, so special use with its special use criteria, the use of a sorority house in this uh, in this location. And then there are the nine, but actually eight variances. Staff has made recommendations on many of these. Uh, and there are four that I'm hearing from the applicant right now. They think that they could withdraw, but we don't have that in front of us. So if we could start our discussion with the special use approval and then move on to the variances, or Matt, what would you like to say?
Yeah, I was going to just say, uh, I'm hearing a lot of changes afoot. And you know, that there may be a parking agreement in the off thing, that some of these variances that uh were extensively written up in the staff report and in the application uh may not be necessary based on changes that they are in the process of making to their site plan. And so it seems to me that maybe um this is not yet ripe for our consideration at all. And and should we consider perhaps tabling it for 45 days to allow them to come forth with a documented parking agreement, with a new site plan, with all of these changes? And then an actual definitive list of the variances that they're asking for? Because I feel like we uh, I'm sure everybody else did too, spent, you know, a bunch of time thinking about the variance um criteria for nine variances that are briefed in the paperwork. And now we're hearing that we don't need half of those. And so it feels to me like um maybe this is a moving target that we really can't um efficiently discuss today, but should suggest that the applicant come back when it's fully baked.
I would generally agree with that. I was going to say the same thing, but just based on shared parking agreement. I think we just have to, we just can't really let go on uh promise it'll be there. And that is a lot of parking spaces. I don't know if I've ever seen a development that has come through for us that needed a shared parking agreement. Needs so many. I do understand, though, that sorority use, I would say for the reasons Matt said, and just reiterating that the lack of the actual shared parking agreement is kind of a problem for me to be able to really evaluate it.
Uh, does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion, uh, but let me ask Bruce if there's some required number of days or optimal number of days to make that motion for.
So uh, in the past, we have given a window. Uh, there has been the three months, I believe. So they could return within the three months. Um, the next available cycle, I believe, would, would, the earliest opportunity to hear this again would be the October meeting. Uh, I believe that's true. So, yeah, but three months, if the, if the motion was to table for a period not to exceed three months.
Okay, I move to table this application for a period not to exceed three months to permit the applicant to work out these loose ends and um set a more definitive plan.
Great, uh, we've heard from the motioner and the seconder. Is there any further discussion of this motion?
Can I just add one little thing? And I'm borrowing Sarah's uh words from another um proposal that was tabled that to have it come through nice and clean and go to them, go to any mayor and commission, nice and clean, I think raises the opportunity for it to be understood. So that is why I would uh vote in favor of the table.
I'll just add one point of discussion on my own motion, which is that I was dumbfounded by the 154 parking space requirement for a sorority, which according to the application materials has 100 members. Um, Bruce, can you help us understand that?
So the, the ratio that the code requires for the assembly space is what's driving that number? It's, it's not necessarily the membership itself or the bedrooms on-site, although those are factors to be taken into account. It's the occupant load possible in that, that gathering space. And it's not just the chapter room. It's any public space that would be able to allow for congregation of people in the building. So it could be study areas and things like that that are all inclusive. So it could be study areas and things like that that are all inclusive.
Chris, has it taken any consideration those numbers that there is such good public transport access? Like there's buses right there because it seems like, you know, we're talking about like an hour and a half a week kind of thing. And if they actually built 100 extra parking spots, that would seem like a huge waste of space to me, you know, for just that little amount of use. So I just, I don't know if like the calculation takes into account that, you know, it would be nice to encourage these people to not drive to these meetings and maybe not having parking spots is a way to do that.
In the right location, right? This process allows for that to be taken into account.
Okay.
Do you mean by that, that for instance, they could request a variance saying, instead of 154, we'd like to have 110 or 90 or whatever, and and that would be a variance that they could try to make the case for if that's where they ended up in in the next three months?
That's right. And yeah, a transportation management plan is often what we see out of this. There is one, there's some language that was submitted, but it was it was not to the level of specificity or forcibility that we've seen with other submittals that have had alternate transportation plans and requirements and agreements signed by chapter members and you know, things like that that carry a little more weight. The language was there, it's just not as firm as what we've seen with other submittals.
All right, is the discussion good? More discussion? Ready for a vote then? Vote uh on the on the motion on the floor.
Motion to table? Please.
Yep.
Aresford?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Sams?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
If you ask the unanimous.
Going to getting post eight. This next one. Let's do one more and then we can take a take a five after uh we get into the future ideas. All right.
Evening, everyone. My name is Steven. Audience. Our application here is at 530 North Hole Street. That's in the process of changing from 180 and 115 Hickman Drive. If you happen to be Googling out there, you may find old addresses, but it's part of a larger redevelopment that's changing the street layout and the addressing system. It's a bit of a unique request. We don't see alternative compliance very often. It's limited to the downtown area and the downtown portion of our code, section nine dash 10 dash six. And in this case specifically C eight, which regulates retaining walls. They're asking specifically for four wall sections that exceed the allowable combination of height and setback that the code requires. It's a type three decision for our ordinance, which means that the planning commission decision is final. This will not be moving on to the mayor and commission unless they were to appeal. The walls are the subject of the vote, but they are associated and part of a multifamily residential project on this property, which is phase two of the Bethel Homes redevelopment, which is part of the North Downtown Master Plan that was adopted several several years ago. It is also part of the North Downtown Design Area for our code. The alternative compliance process exists to allow deviations from development standards from projects that are in that commercial downtown zone that don't meet those design standards as long as they can satisfy the criteria for alternative compliance. So the code reference nine, 10, six, C eight is longer than this, but I want to draw you to two sections that are particularly relevant. First is the reason that they need the alternative compliance first place, which is the clause that says retaining walls in the front, rear or side yard adjacent to a public right of way or private street shall be set back from a public right of way a minimum of two feet for every foot of wall height above three feet in height. So you gotta set it back two feet for every foot of wall height above three feet in height. The code also states that retaining walls over five feet in height shall be screened by a landscape buffer meeting the standards of an adjacent piece of code. However, wall art, including murals, sculptural or other decorative treatment of exterior walls may extend for a maximum of 50% of the wall length. So landscaping and murals can be used or shall be used to screen these walls. And they're required for walls over five feet, but our recommendation in this case for three of the wall sections is that we would apply this section, even though they're not five feet, but in exchange for letting them have a closer setback then they could be addressed with some landscaping and and decoration. So the purpose of this regulation on walls is to provide engaging patterns along the streets, including regular and frequent openings in buildings that are at the street level where you would experience them as you walk by. Doors and windows cohesively arranged across the whole facade. There's some research that's been done that indicates people have a preference for face-like patterns on buildings. Detailed ornamentation and orderly hierarchy of structures, these are all things that create engagement for humans. The ordinance is also there to prevent retaining walls that are excessive in size and length because they create blank facades that erase those patterns and therefore discourage people from using that space, especially along our streets. This is the location of the site highlighted in yellow. Like I said, this property is in is in the midst of shifting. So right now we have a street that runs right through it. But that you if you go out there, you'll see that there's a newly constructed multifamily phase one right here. Uh and the street is gonna eventually come right here and then essentially create a grid. That's why the address is in flux as well. This is all part of the North Downtown Master Plan redevelopment, uh which is aiming to provide, you know, additional housing, mixed income housing, uh what we might say capital A subsidized affordable housing. It's all part of this project. This is the future land use. It's downtown. It would remain that way. As are all the other properties around there is also commercial downtown zoning in the North Downtown Design Area, which was approved as part of the uh established as part of the redevelopment plan. Back to walls for a second. Historically, in other parts of downtown, we would have handled slopes by sloping the the building itself. Like you can see here, we have our entrance slightly higher on this in this unit than we do here. That would be a multi-tenant building where you would have different levels. In other areas, you can see that they did small buildings and then stepped them down. And that creates that engagement and that's how people dealt with sloping terrain of downtown Athens historically. Recently, we've moved towards using retaining walls. This is the a view of one of the angles of the new building that's just been constructed out there. And you can see we've got retaining wall here and then part two of the wall stepped back just a little bit. So that's an exhibit of of what the law requires now. We've got the landscaping, we've got fence. But you don't get the street at the same level of street engagement there. This is an example of of a mural that could also be used to satisfy some of the code. This is also downtown. And this is an example of some of the walls that are being proposed. And you can see we've added some landscaping here to hide it and it's a fairly small, it supports a landing. So you can have large walls, you can have small walls. Those are all part of the project. We have one wall in particular, F two, that is about 70 feet long, six to eight feet height. This is an existing wall downtown that roughly approximates that. There perhaps to be some more landscaping in the proposed one than than is here, but this gives you kind of the visual of what you would see at Island. This is the overall site plan. We have a block sized apartment building, taking up a whole new block. We have a parking deck in the interior and then it's hard to see here exactly, but the red highlights there are exactly where those wall sections need the alternative compliance. There are other walls on site, but they are able to meet the code as is. Now highlight the 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 actual sections of all here. We have section A, which you can see is located here on the site plan at this corner. And then you can see the the 2D visual of the elevation there. So fairly small, supportive of landing there. This is wall F two. This one is, as I just said, about 70 feet in length, six to eight feet in height. I'll give it away. This is the one that staff does not support. It would just feel like it's too long and it would, you know, impose some, uh it would just not meet the spirit of what the code is looking for. And then we have two smaller portions, wall J two and J three here, uh broken up to the sections there. So the test to satisfy for granting alternative compliance is a four-part test. The request would result in public benefits greater than any negative impacts. The request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan. And the request is consistent with the attributes of the downtown and of the down design area described in the alternative compliance guidelines and the repressed conforms to the relevant alternative compliance guidelines. So I mean, it needs to meet all four criteria. What are those defined principles and attributes? They are listed in your staff report. They are also listed here for your reference. Generally creating pedestrian friendly environment, creating that human scale, it feels just right. It's not too big, it's not too small. It feels um a bit like a a bit of an embrace for a human. Establishing visual continuity while also allowing some creativity and diversity in individual buildings. A mixing of the uses that creates a more vital downtown. Downtown is supposed to be a place of collective memory, public expression, human and humane experience, really centering the the human experience here and not, for example, uh the automobile. And then making sure that downtown is accessible, diverse, sustainable, um and a vibrant place. Alternative compliance asks that projects work to quote, meet the design standards for commercial downtown zoning. But where they can't, they should reflect consistency with their design area and meet general design principles as just listed here. We've assessed it for compatibility with the 2023 comprehensive plan. I would note that the overall project, the the redevelopment, the multifamily building here is compatible with redeveloping challenged multifamily housing, adding affordable housing, in this case explicitly so. Owned by the Athens Housing Authority and contributing to the vibrancy and diversity of downtown. The comp plan also calls for walkability and staff feels like there are opportunities for the applicant to improve the design of their walls to better align with the comp plan. It is compatible with the future land use map. In general, we've note that large buildings on slopes and downtown Athens and Athens in general has a lot of slopes often need very large foundations and therefore they need large walls. The trouble with those walls is that it can create that blank facade and elevates the risk of creating dead zones along the right of way, which we're trying to avoid. So with that overall principle in mind, we do think that wall sections A, J two and J three satisfy the alternative compliance test largely because they are fairly small in size and won't create much impact. However, staff does recommend using that code requirement for landscaping and decoration, even though they're they wouldn't automatically trigger that by their height. However, wall section F two, again, seven is is just a bit too long and too high to satisfy that test. So we're recommending approval um with conditions as worded here. And also in your staff report. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Steven. At this time, we will hear from the applicant.
All right. Good evening. My name is Buck Beatty. I'm with W A Engineering located at 355 Anita Street here in Athens, Georgia. And I'm here to speak on behalf of our of the developer and owner, the Athens Housing Authority, Columbia Residential, along with the partners Jonathan Rose Companies and the Unified Government. Both uh both the site construction, well, one, I wanna just go ahead and say that obviously we're asking for your support and approval of the proposed alternative compliance elements as proposed. The proposed project is phase two of the North Downtown Athens Master Plan. Phase one was recently open and is currently occupied. This phase is obviously a continuance of the master plan and includes 182 units, of which 73 would be 30% AMI and 73 would be 60% AMI. There is approximately uh 70 feet of elevation change across phase one and phase two. This is an exhibit from the master plan that was approved that that reflects that significant change in topography across the site. There is approximately 30 feet of grade change across phase two. Uh as you can see in this slide, well, we can't can't really see, we could zoom in. But the if you imagine standing at the intersection of Strong and Lumpkin Street and then going to the diagonal corner of North Lumpkin, or excuse me, North Hall and Madison, there's approximately 30 feet of grade change across the block. We have been able to manage and mitigate most of this grade change through uh three separate floor elevations. However, that does require the addition of site rotating walls. So there are four walls, as Steven mentioned, walls A, F two, J two and J three. I think really the focus is it's really on on F two. If we can go to, so wall A, staff supports, we're good with that. That's great. Awesome. Wall J two and J three, staff supports, that's great. So wall F two is the subject of of the conversation tonight. So it's important to to note that this is in the North Downtown Design District where ground floor dwelling units are allowed in CD zone. And of course, all of this this facility is where has ground floor dwelling units, which must be ADA accessible, must meet certain requirements uh that are set forth by the DCA and other funding sources for this project. So it does necessitate some retaining walls. Uh we did review staff's report. We understand the intent and so in as a in response, what we'd like to propose is along F two, create a art mural along the the length, that that 70 foot length. We've intentionally uh not not been too detailed. We want to make sure that there's some artistic agency in the design of of this mural. But that's what we're proposing as the solution to F two. Um and we'd like to ask that you approve that. What I would note is uh is is that this project has been reviewed uh through the plan review per uh process. So the site plans are ready to go. Uh the uh building plans are ready to be permitted. This is the only remaining item uh to check off the the list to allow us to move forward. If you uh support this tonight, uh we're gonna start construction and hopefully this fall and on some much needed affordable housing. So with that, I'm gonna ask that you support this approach to addressing staff's concerns with F two and really appreciate your time tonight.
Is there any member of the public here to speak in support of this application?
Sheila Chris, the Executive Director of Athens Housing Authority. Uh thank you tonight. We would like to request for the support um for the wall. I would like to say um phase one, also known as the view at Noda. Just to say that we're pleased to mention that it's not only 100% leased, it is 100% occupied. We do believe that with staff recommendation, the mural would be not only satisfied, but it would also bring a sense of community within the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public here to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening. My name is Betty Gomez, 800 Sudbury Road, Sandy Springs, Georgia. And I'm representing Columbia Residential and Affordable Housing Developer in partnership with the Athens Housing Authority. And we solicit your support in allowing us to build the mural to satisfy the intent of the objection or override the objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public here to speak in support? Is there any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this application? All right. With that, we'll take it behind the rail. And I believe we need to start with a bit of procedural business. Correct me if I'm wrong. The, the mural is not in this application, right?
Correct.
So in order to consider the mural, that would need to be, um, accepted as an amendment to the application. Is that right?
Or could we not impose it as a condition on approval?
Our discussion prior to, in agenda setting and, and prior was that that would be a requirement because this is a type three.
Yes, and, and in part of, uh, what could have happened here was if there was an exhibit that was very specific, um, we might have had to accept that and make it part of the record to, to keep it clean and build the record properly. I think, I, I may not be getting this quite right, but I think the applicant is just generally asking for a mural to be placed on the 70-foot length of that wall without any specificity about the content of the mural or the materials or, or anything else. So maybe what we, given what we talked about before, was if we had something very specific, this might be able to be handled as a condition of approval, just given the lack of specificity. It's an approach. It's not an actual design.
Okay, so this is, this is a condition.
It could be that.
It could be a condition, but it cannot be an amendment. Okay, great.
I have a question about that. Is the landscape elements that we saw in that drawing part, would that be part of that?
That's a good question for the applicant. Yeah, yes, the, the landscape would remain. That, so the mural is in addition to the proposed landscape.
Okay, thanks. So if we were to make a condition, would we need to specify both that there'd be a mural and there'd be, I, I don't really know if we need to like get specific about quantity or height or?
The plantings were part of the submittal already.
Okay.
So, so if it was adding the mural, that could be noted that it's not removing the landscaping. It's as submitted with the addition of the mural. Okay.
All right. Can I just ask a question of the, I mean, this is the applicant or maybe this is a question for you, Bruce, but what's the alternative here to, I mean, I tend to agree with the staff that, that the other three are fine because they're very short-walled, but the 70-foot wall, I mean, they're very, um, retaining walls feel like a lazy way out of, uh, I mean, a simple way to deal with topography. But also there's, like Stephen showed us in the exhibits, like there's a lot of topography in downtown Athens, and so we have staggered entries where they're, you know, each, each entry is at a progressively lower height. And so there's other ways to do it that are more kind of pedestrian-friendly. And I generally agree with the staff report that, um, wall F2 is maybe a bridge too far. And I just wondered, like, what's the alternative here? Why can't you do staggered entries? Or if I'm understanding page LC 511, uh, when I look at the top half of that page, where you show the top-down view, like the bird's eye view of wall F2, it looks like the purpose of wall F2 being close to the sidewalk is to provide additional patio space for the apartments that are up on top of that patio. And so why not shrink the patios and do a greater setback so that you don't need alternative compliance? So I just wonder if you can talk about why you have to, feel like you have to do it this way and, and what the alternatives are and why those are unacceptable or undesirable?
Yeah, I think, yeah, okay. That, that is a great question. And, and I will say that often retaining walls are used as a lazy way out of solving the problem. That is not the case here. So, uh, if, if we look at this drawing here, I don't know how the laser, right? Yeah. So as you look along each one of these fringes, there are dwelling unit entrances along the entire fringe. So, uh, and, and to address the patio, those patios are ADA access. So by code, we're required to provide direct access to the public street or sidewalk from those dwelling units to the street. And then we have to do that in a fashion that is ADA accessible. And it's not simply acceptable to, uh, like access the units from the interior through ADA accessibility. The ADA accessibility regulations require that, that both entrances be fully accessible. And so these aren't really patios. These are access walks to ADA accessible walks to enter these units. And, uh, the, the retaining walls, there are multiple retaining walls. I'd say, I mean, obviously we got the J, uh, and, and labing the retaining walls that provide multiple access to these. I will say that we've, we've worked diligently with the planning staff and the public work staff to solve a multitude of structural challenges with those retaining walls to ensure that we have egress. It's certainly not a lazy approach to them.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to cast this.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But when you say that they're ADA accessible, I think I see stairs on the picture.
There, there is one that is not ADA accessible. That is the wall, that is, that is, is this one here. And that, that, we have to ask for an exception when we get there from, from, from our ADA accessibility consultant. That one just, it's just impossible.
Okay, on, on LC 511 though, aren't there, it looks like there's 10 steps or so heading up to the patio.
ADA accessible through this location and around the building and through here. There's no, another set of stairs here.
Okay, so those patios are not separated. People can walk out of their unit and then go across their neighbor's patio until they find.
Correct, yes, I guess, yes. It is a means and.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, not patio.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant while he's up here? Okay. Further discussions? And, uh, could you pull up the four criteria that we're gonna add, just as a reminder? This is what we're going by in making this decision? Thank you.
I don't have any problem with this. To me, keeping the ADA accessibility is more important for the residents and also having that extra height there. It's gonna provide a little bit more privacy and potentially security for the people living on that ground floor that they wouldn't have if they didn't have that retaining wall there. So I'm, I'm totally fine with the alternative of putting a mural there. I think it's another opportunity for public art downtown. If they could open that process up and have a call for artists within the community, that would be even better.
I agree with a lot of the same things Jen just said, you know, I, it's not a huge hangup for me. I think overall it's a good project and, uh, the mural, I think, is a good solution, you know, like supporting local artists. And I think keeping the ADA accessibility is important too. So overall, I think I can move past any hesitations with retaining wall and I like the solutions that they're offering.
With all that, I don't, I don't think that I'd probably want a little buffer between the street and my patio as well, so.
Monique?
I was just gonna make a most over.
Yeah.
All right, um, uh, do you, um, are you thinking of it with the condition about the mural or no condition?
No condition.
Okay, motion to approve, uh, alternative compliance, uh, without conditions?
So.
I'll just say that I would second it if the mural was a condition.
Oh, me too.
Okay, so.
I would like to see this condition if I'm gonna support it.
Okay, so, uh, so this is a competing motion then.
Oh, I didn't mean it like that. I was just, uh, offering my, uh, operation with Monique's motion if she wanted it, provided that she's willing to add the condition. But maybe she can find somebody else who will second without that proviso.
I, I did, I did check to see if she wanted the condition. She said no. Is there a second for approval, no conditions?
Second with approval, no conditions.
All right.
Can I make an alternate proposal to, to approve with conditions?
Yep. Do you have a second? Uh, which, which conditions specifically?
The mural. That they would have to do public art on the 70-foot span.
For, for walls, okay, for wall section F2.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So I believe we, uh, need to have a vote on the, yeah, uh, vote on the substitute motion.
I have a question that I think. Orders discussion? Yeah. I think so, which is that staff did recommend, um, I think that they added a condition to their recommendation of approval of, of three of the four wall sections. Do I have that right? And so I don't know if that means we need to make a second substitution or if, if any, yeah, we need to kind of address that. Unless, um.
Does the, what you're saying is, does the condition include denial of that wall still?
Well, I think what I'm saying is that when staff made their recommendation, they, they're recommending approval of three of the, three of the wall sections with conditions, which I actually think they had one condition, um, there because the, the recommended denial of the fourth one. And so, and then we're talking about adding a, a sort of going against the recommendation on F2 and accepting the applicant's willingness to add art to the wall part, basically. So I think we have to kind of address because when staff added that condition to their approval, everything about landscape buffer, et cetera, wall art, et cetera, is part of that approval recommendation?
The, the staff recommendation came with the wording that says, "as long as it is screened or decorated in accordance with Section 910-6C, DC8."
Okay, so do you need that condition or is it?
So that was a, that was, it wasn't made as explicit as we sometimes do, but that, that is a condition that staff was recommending for wall section A, uh, J2 and J3. And we added F2 to that condition with that kind of.
It sounds like.
A friendly amendment that folds that in.
Then it would require the art on F2 and what you would recommend, what staff recommended for the other three too. Okay, I would be in favor of that amendment to the thing I seconded.
Okay, so Jen's motion? Approval with conditions, uh, set by staff, but instead of all the wall sections except for F2, it's every wall section under that condition. That makes sense?
And then the mural on F2.
Yeah.
And mural on F2.
Second condition.
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than.
In a second condition, sure.
Make first condition as worded and then you would make your own second condition.
Okay.
Okay.
Too specific.
Okay.
Yeah, with a mural.
Yeah, so my motion is acceptance with all of the conditions and a mural.
On F2.
Just to be clear, staff had two conditions, one of which was to deny F2. So don't say, I would think you wouldn't want to say all, but just staff's first condition and your second condition of approving F2 with a addition of a mural.
Yes, so to clarify, the first two conditions that staff is recommending.
The first one.
First one commission. The first one condition that staff is recommending and an additional recommendation for the mural. The condition for the mural.
To approve the mural with the mural, yep.
Do we need to address Monique's motion though?
I think Robert's.
You vote on the substitute motion first.
It's a substitute motion, so we, we would vote.
On that.
As it replaces Monique's motion.
Yes. Stephen, whenever you are ready. No. No rush whatsoever.
Motion to approve with the conditions. First one is the staff, the second one is the, the F2 approval with the mural. Please?
Yes.
There's for.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Glaughlin?
Yes.
Sam's?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Shepaski, unanimous.
Right, um, and I think before moving on to our next, uh, two items, we should take a seven-minute break. So at eight thirty.
Seven minutes?
Yeah, seven minutes.
Okay, good.
I must say, meet one is like another.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Let's move on to future land use and short term rentals, two items that are very trivial, so it shouldn't take long, right?
Nothing to discuss. Okay. Have a, what I hope, nope.
Yes.
I got back at work. Uh. We're going to revisit future land use. Mark gave much more in depth presentation when we had this before you in the work session format. We have trimmed that presentation down just to hit some highlights for tonight in case there's anybody here that didn't get the benefit of hearing that, or this is maybe the first time that they're hearing about the subject. So we'll we'll go through that, not quickly, but at a good clip, and then I want to get into discussion. Um, we want to be able to have public comment received before we have the discussion with you. So we do want to allow time for that. So here we are. Twenty forty five future land use map presented to the planning commission for action, so choose this evening. It's kind of an exciting night, two and a half year process. Feels really good to be talking to you about it. So as we noted before, why do we do this? And this is a, it's a policy document. This is something that every community that has any kind of planning aspirations has something like this. They may call it something different, but most folks call it a future land use map. And so this was the very first action item to come out of the twenty twenty three comprehensive plan. Future land use maps are in every comprehensive plan in the state of Georgia, and they're usually done at the same time, part of that singular planning process. That's how we've done it in the past. This time is different because kept losing the opportunity to actually finish the future land use map. There was so much energy in the comprehensive plan, so we broke it out this time and made it the very first action item out of the twenty three comprehensive plan. So we go through this to determine where development can take place, and in this case, we're actually looking at where development density can realistically be increased. We know we've got growth coming, the growth is not going to stop. We've projected that we may have thirty thousand plus people over the life of this plan, so that's twenty years. In order to hit the guiding principles that I'll show in a minute, what we're looking for is opportunities to bring that growth into appropriate areas that already have services. So to consider what are those trade offs for making a more efficient land use pattern? And then also, not insignificantly, to talk about how to do this with an eye towards affordability and quality design, again, in a realistic way so that those things can be achieved. So tonight, we're asking for your consideration and potential action on three components that need to move forward to the mayor and the commission for their consideration. The three things are the future land use map itself, which is in the middle easel here. The future land use map designations themselves, the wording of the categories, the narrative that goes with each of those needs to be adopted. And then the third thing is, we have a table in Athens Clark County, we're the only county in the state that actually can converts future land use to zoning and considers it every single time we have a zoning action that is inconsistent with the future land use map. Most communities kind of put off the future land use map, it becomes a reference tool. We actually have it in our ordinance that we have to take a look at it. And so we feel like this is a contract with the community that we're keeping up with this promise that when we go through a two and a half year process, not going to forget about you. We're going to make this part of the discussion every time. So those three things are what we're needing to forward. So gonna. Wait, I do that? Sorry. Okay. So we do have a future land use map. I just want to make that abundantly clear, a little bit of confusion about that. We have had a future land use map in this community for as long as I've worked here, and that started in nineteen ninety eight. Had one for a couple decades before I started working here. This is our current future land use map. This map, should we adopt the twenty forty five future land use map, this map would go into the archives and we would move along. Mark talked about these guiding conditions that we started out with this process, but I think it's worth saying again, there are some things we can change, there are some things we can't change. Those rigid things are the things we typically want to protect. So environmentally sensitive areas, first and foremost, open space and respecting our topography. As we've heard earlier this evening, we are not a flat community. We do have rolling areas and those areas are significant, and we we want to work with those whenever we are building or or changing our community. Speaking of built, so the built environment is something that's relatively firm. So our water, our storm water, our roadways, our sanitary sewer, those things are are built pieces of infrastructure, along with our greenway and our trails. Those networks are relatively firm. Can we add to them? Can we move them? Yes, but typically at great expense. So we want to make sure that we're holding on to those and getting the best utility out of those investments we have in our community. And then the third category is a little softer, tends to be more policy based, and it's, it is more valuable. And it is something that's subject to community discussion, like a comprehensive plan, like our zoning regulations, and the future land use map certainly is one of those things. So we talked about the big ideas, we are going to grow, we think thirty thousand people by twenty forty five. We have heard from every corner, and I think we believe it to be true, that housing variety and availability has to increase in order for us to grow in a sustainable way and have opportunity for everybody in Athens. And then we know very well that we have expensive and aging infrastructure that needs attention. This future land use map is intended to set the table for us to do that responsibly over the next twenty years. So in the new future land use map, uh, future land use steering committee report that you were sent a link to yesterday. One of the images that's in that report is this image that's on the screen. And it's meant to summarize the entire process we've gone through since the spring of of two thousand twenty three to this moment. And frankly, beyond, because we are talking about into the fall of this year, having discussion with the county commission about this project. Lots of community input, we feel pretty strongly that we've had some key milestone moments where we've heard from the community and we folded it into the process, and that has yielded a set of guiding principles that we've interpreted into a growth concept map. That growth concept map and those principles were then used in concert with looking at our existing future land use to come up with a new set of descriptions. And this graphic helps you see how we moved from one list of future land use categories to the current list that we're proposing. And then when the map was developed for the future land use map, one of the key priorities we heard from the community was, don't go crazy. Don't change everything. Now, we did say very publicly, every piece of property is under consideration, and the future land use steering committee took that to heart. That was absolutely a part of their deliberation. And as they came to it, we ended up with those properties that are colored in this image were those properties that the steering committee found there would be some change, even if it was in name only. What you have here is government property that has since been split into three categories. Everything that was government is now either park or it's or it's education or it's government. So we thought that was a good change, the steering committee felt like that was more specificity to the map that was helpful when thinking about land use. There's also change on this map that's considered with regard to ground true thing, so I just took off the government. The light green areas in particular are those areas in our rural parts of town that already have a density that is greater than what we think of with our rural future land use. And so we're not looking to return those subdivisions or those neighborhoods back to farm fields. So the thinking here is that the future land use map should take those things into account. We recognize those, the steering committee said, yes, we need to come up with a category for that, and that category is rural residential. You take those off the map, this is the amount of substantive change that the steering committee is proposing on this version that's before you. It represents less than six percent of the land of Athens Clark County, but we feel pretty strongly that making changes in intensity along these corridors that you see, or in the nodes where we have intersections of those roadways, and making sure that we're doing that where we have adequate sewer service, this is the amount of change that would be necessary to accommodate the growth that we think is going to happen over the next twenty years. I want to keep saying that, this is a twenty year vision. So these changes are not something that's going to take place next twenty four months. This is something that's meant to handle our growth over two decades. So all of that was translated into a brand new twenty forty five future land use map that looks like this. The steering committee spent a good bit of time, frankly, going parcel by parcel in some instances, to come up with this representation of what we think Athens Clark County needs over the next twenty years to accommodate our growth and still have the opportunity to grow in the future, to make better use of our infrastructure and to provide quality of life for everybody who's going to be here over the next two decades. So that other deliverable that's part of this is that compatibility matrix, and y'all have seen this off and on as you hear items before you, maybe you haven't seen it quite like this, this is what it looks like in the code. It's extremely interesting to look at, right? Black and white, little Xs in boxes, but it's a pretty powerful tool. And this is what sets us apart with how we think about future land use and have made it part of our discussion with the development community, part of our promise to the community to keep up with things. This is a very key component to that. So this is that third aspect of what we'd be asking you to consider and forward to the mayor and commission. So those are those three items. I've got a series of map images that we can go through if necessary. We have queued up that slider tool that's on the website, if that's helpful, if we get down into the nitty gritty of some things, we can certainly do that. But I'm going to end there with the staff presentation and and we can open it up for public comment. And happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you.
Stephen, since you're typing this stuff up, would this be a for against thing you're looking for, or is this a general?
I'll just comment.
All right.
And minutes?
Yep, three minutes still applies. Is there any member of the public here to make a make a comment about the proposed future land use map? All right. I do recognize that some of our steering committee members are here. Appreciate your presence and all the work that you did. That said, let's take it behind the rail. I will note for those watching at home for the record, just again, we did have a work session where we had a much longer presentation and a longer discussion about this. Most, if not all, of the folks here were there, most, not all, were there. So someone watching online is saying, doesn't seem like you guys have much to say about this, it's real important. That that was also streamed online, and you can watch our discussion from that and our discussions about this many times previously. So just putting that out there. Does anyone have anything that they want to say or a motion to make on this item?
I just have a question about this compatibility matrix. Because I understood you to say, like, from from this table here, I see that the government category has been split now into three different things, government, education, and parks and open space. And I don't, I see on this compatibility matrix, I see G and P, government and parks. Am I missing the education? Education is not its own. It is a future land use category, but it is not a zoning category.
I got you.
Where we have education as a future land use, it would be compatible with either institutional or government zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
My other question sort of related to education is is what about like neighborhood childcare centers where somebody runs a childcare center in a single family residential area or something like that? Is that? Is that a special use permit, or is that something that is, you know, zoning related, or how how does that?
That's a good question. So education at that scale typically is folded into either residential areas as a special use, or it's allowed by right in the use table that we have in our zoning code in our commercial zones, for example. Um, I think RM might allow for daycare with maybe limitations or maybe not even. So it's, it doesn't translate into a specific zoning category, but we have educational uses that are broken out in our use table that's in every single zoning chapter. Kind of a long, but it's accommodated through the the zoning code itself, a daycare as opposed to a trade school, as opposed to a grade school or a college. Those are all separate uses in our use table that is in every zone, and there's ones where they're appropriate, permitted outright, and there are others where they're not appropriate, and there's some that are special use approval.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. My my only other kind of general comment, I think this is all great, I really think that the committee did a great job and staff did a great job and the the table and the map and everything make a great deal of sense. I did want to make a suggestion, there was a slide about five slides back that if running slides could jump back to, it has a bunch of arrows on it showing how, well, that, yeah. I suppose it should have an arrow from downtown to downtown, just like it has an arrow from employment to employment center. But my comment was this, the intention of this, I don't think is executed as well as it could be, like, general business, if you follow the red arrows, is it shows, we now have three categories or or no, four, general business, major corridor, town center and urban center. Uh, and I just wanted to suggest that to make that more approachable to the public and the mayor and commission that it might be if you space out the stuff on the left and group the related things on the right so that all four things that split off from general business are clustered. Got the red arrow going over to show like, you know, I think it'll just be more clear at a glance to the layperson who has not been through multiple meetings about this process, what that graphic is intended to indicate and why it's good and helpful. But I I think it is really useful, all this work that the committee did to kind of develop these additional categories and everything, I think is is commendable, and I just wanted to suggest some minor tweaks to that.
So maybe not a circuit diagram? If that's, it looks like you're rewiring your garage door opener or something, right?
The idea of this.
The idea of this circuit diagram was good. I just think if you look at the organization of the two lists, it's just alphabetical. And I would think what Matt's suggesting is sort of, especially when you have something like general business has been split into four or a couple of others like that, like the main street business has been split into minor corridor or neighborhood center. You might as well put those two next to each other because it's, it's not like that list on the right is by intensity. It's just alphabetical right now.
Yep. Is there a line to single family residential I just noticed? Or is it just light colored?
No, there's no, just like Matt mentioned, downtown, employment center, single family just translated over here. I'm not sure why we did employment center, honestly, but we could do all of them or none of them. The many prior presentations we've done, we've got exactly what you've just mentioned. So we'll slide that in for the mayor commission in the benefit of the public.
Thank you. I would say my kind of overall comment is, you know, I think this is great. I think the committee did a great job, you know? I think this is kind of a great illustration of how these type of processes should work, you know? It was like tons of public input, the committee did a great job. And, you know, I really trust in the process, so I don't have a lot of like granular things to pick apart. Cause I feel like, you know, people that know a lot more about the specifics have kind of made these decisions and looked over it a lot. So I feel very comfortable with everything that's been done and I really appreciate all the hard work.
I do remember there was a comment, I feel like during our last meeting about the descriptions on this page. Was that ever addressed or was there any updates on?
It was to match. I'm glad y'all brought all this up again because like some of the, if I, if I may, Bruce, some of these charts were, you know, working brain coming out and it makes sense. And to hear y'all say and see it's, that's really what matters now. And so I remember the comment that you referring to, I believe. And it, it's so, the group, it's just a matter of the groupings, I believe, is what the comment about.
The public had some questions about the groupings that are on there. They're clear to me, but if we just want to make sure.
The flow from just a kind of a walk up reader versus the flow versus a working circuit diagram. Cause that diagram makes perfect sense to me and it doesn't necessarily, and it needs to be easier and so it flows.
Would it be helpful on the rainbow sheet? If along here, there was something that, that had, I don't want to say it's another column, but it would function like another column. We would just make it smaller that said, all right, these sandwichs are commercial. And then you move into mixed use and then you move into residential and then, you know, and just in along the sides you have, you might have two or three rows coming out of a block that says commercial. And then you'd have five rows coming out that are residential or largely residential or, you know, what? And it sort of gives a topical heading.
Yeah. I think that would make it very helpful. Okay.
I will just draw our attention to the future land use categories full text, which is one of the three documents that we are voting to approve or not, which seems to have been responding to these comments. Look at it, the way that it's grouped. Falling was in downtown and it's similar downtown. Following was previously in general business, urban center, town center, general business, major corridor. So I do like how the text that is, is the subject of our vote today. Certainly seems to be responding to that, that feedback in a way that agrees very clearly.
I would add, it seems like during our work session, even we would get a little bit caught up in kind of conflating future land use designation and zoning. And I definitely see that amongst members of the public. And I, if I could sort of anticipate what I think will happen at the mayor commission meeting is that those members of public who are continuing to conflict two things are going to be loud and proud. And I'm worried about that because of how many years has gone into this. And I think we all generally feel very comfortable about the process, like Mike was saying. And, and so I wondered a little bit when I first looked at the compatibility matrix, like if that doesn't, if that's what people and including the commissioners are going to be looking at. I kind of made the same mistake Matt did when I first looked at it because it took me a second to figure out like neutral land use is here, that's where education is. Cause I looked at that exact same thing, but I wonder if that page, if that's what the commissioners are going to be getting is the, is the moment to provide a brief explanation of what, I think, I think the way people get confused is they think that since there are certain zoning classifications that are compatible with a certain future lands, land use designation, it means that it's all possible and allowed kind of like that. That, that, that because you, I think there is a concern that like, if you've identified something, like just to take our top example on this sheet, major corridor. So what's allowed there or what's compatible with that land use is RM2, RM3, CO, CG. And then the kind of institutional open space categories. And I think that there's a concern that people have that, that because a very intense use is compatible with that future land use designation, that that, that there, that that's an easy get, an easy rezone to get that, like that it's, oh, that that would be, that there's a little bit of a sense of panic that you could have CG everywhere, for example. And that future land use designation is not the best example because I think where it gets into things really, of course, is residential. And so I think people think like, if you've rezone, what's the one that keeps coming up, I think, but like, I don't know, maybe, maybe minor, well, actually, I was trying to think of a good example of what I'm trying to say. That, you know, there's just a concern that in a particular, you know, we've seen now a couple of applications come through where people are really, really fighting. They don't want to go from RM1 to RM2. And I think there's a concern, like if you look at mixed density residential, I think there's a concern people have that everyone, every lot in a mixed density residential future land use could in fact be an RM3, even though that's not what we're saying at all with future land use map. But it is saying that RM3 is compatible in that future land use. Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying. So part of this is an opportunity to reinforce process of changing zoning, for example, when somebody makes a request, it's not an automatic. But I hear you and I could see that confusion comes out of this. What this in essence does for somebody is it doesn't change what you can or can't ask for. It changes how much time it takes to make that ask.
Yeah. And you could ask for something, I mean, everybody has a right to ask for a reason on any of these property.
Right.
And so I think, I think, you know, we see this a lot on the planning commission that, that neighbors and people come and they are like, they've got their pitchforks because they're mad that we even are considering, right? They're like, how are you guys, how, why are you guys even considering that? Like they don't understand, like you have to, we have to, like staff just has to respond. And so I think that that gets a little bit, that there, you know, I heard somebody say at one of these meetings recently, like, well, now you guys are just going to, now you're just going to be up zoning all RM1s to RM2s now. And, and worried that if you have a future land use designation that allows RM2s, that you're like greasing the skids, you're not greasing the skids. It, it, you're, it's, you're talking about your difference between type one and type two. So there's, there's that administrative piece that makes it a little easier. It doesn't make it more likely. It just makes it administratively easier.
Yes.
And I think there's some way, there, there was a way even one or two elected people who were in the room during the work session I'm talking about responded that made me think that they even didn't quite understand. And were possibly even going to vote against this on principle. So I think we really need to get out ahead of that misunderstanding. I think whenever I've talked to somebody and explained this process and what it is, and most importantly, what it isn't, they always seem to feel a little better about it. But like, they lead with not understanding it and I'm worried about, I'm concerned about that this, all of this work could get kind of thwarted by people not understanding. I know I'm taking like five minutes to make a point. It's a little bit of a challenging point to make, but it kind of gets it.
What could we do?
Well, that's why I was wondering a little bit about like on the, on the page that the commissioners get with the compatibility matrix. Maybe there's an opportunity to add some explanatory text in there. It needs to be a different piece of paper because you're trying to be clear that they're not voting on it. That's fine, but just like to really be clear, because I think also, I remember going to one of the public input sessions and a member of the public said to me like, the planning staff keeps saying that this is not zoning and I think that's disingenuous and here's why. And I kind of understood what they were saying, like it is not, it is not correct to say this is not zoning. It most definitely impacts zoning, but like, we just have to be very clear. And, and, you know, I think that you guys could do as good a job, a way better job than I could ever do. But just sort of describing, just providing a little bit of that big picture text, especially because you have commissioners who weren't here when this all started and possibly weren't even thinking about future land use map. And so to them, this might feel like kind of coming out of nowhere or only having been worked on for two years or something. But I just think we need, there's still a little piece of education that needs to happen. Let them understand that just because there's, just because there are more, there are zoning classifications that are compatible with the land use doesn't give, doesn't impact whether that can be rezoned or not. It's like, it's just because there's a, you know, just because you're in a, in a place, if you live in a place with RM1, but RM, and you've got a piece of property that's on RM1, but RM2 is also allowed a future land use. That doesn't make us like, that doesn't make that piece of property more likely to get rezoned. I think it's trying to reassure people that there's not going to be all these big up zoning pushes just because of the future land use designation.
That's right.
And I don't know if they understand that always.
Yeah. If I, if I may, I think that we've, we've gotten into a, just to clarify, I think we have gotten into a conversation that is more giving feedback to the planning staff about issues that we see that they should be aware of and, and we hope that they would address in their communication. And, and away from, because I think that the, the sort of explanatory documents that you were talking about would not be, is, are not what we are voting to approve or recommend approval or denial for. Just to clarify what I think we're looking at. Cause the things that we are voting to approve or deny are going to be the same, you know, recommend, approval, denial for, are going to be the same pieces of text and information that the mayor commission will vote on. And they're not going to be voting on the explanatory documents that, that show the whole process. You know what I mean? So I think just for, for the conversation moving forward, I think it's worth clarifying.
If I may though, I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah.
And, and the delivery of the message is critical, right? And if anything, that the last two and a half years and certainly working with the steering committee has taught us is that people understand, like anything, people understand this topic differently. They under, they learn different ways. Some folks, it's more tactile, they have to go stand in front of something and, and see it and hear it and touch it. And other folks can read it and get it. And then other folks can hear presentations and hear logic and, and engineering assurances and it makes sense. And so we kind of have to hit everybody where they learn with this. And it's a super complicated subject area because it's not a subject area, it's every subject area. And how we present that is going to be critical. So Sarah, I appreciate, I appreciate your well wishes is what I'm, I'm taking from it. Like, you know, good luck. But.
Style matters.
But I think, you know, we, we're ready for that. I, I, we know we're going to have to have different modes of delivering this information. We have a work session that I think tentatively is going to happen in October. Our hope is that we have opportunities between, again, should, should y'all take action tonight that moves this forward. Between now and October, we are working with the manager's office to maybe create some, some creative and friendly opportunities to dig into this in a way that we don't have to worry about quorum and we don't have to worry about all this other stuff. Let's have a, let's answer the questions that the community has because they are being passed on to our elected officials and they're doing their job in representing those people that are concerned. And let's hear from those folks and let's talk about them and let's, let's walk through it. And maybe there is something about it that isn't quite right, even though we've had a whole lot of time put into it. We need to be open to the fact that there might be something that we have to do to make it applicable. But yeah, to your point, I, I think we're going to have to find a bunch of creative ways. And if there's anything about this process, it's been, we've had creative ways of talking to people since day one. I mean, we started out with blocks, right? So we're here for it. Let's, let's talk about it.
I have a question kind of following that, what if it doesn't pass the commission? Does it just come back and need to be revised or?
So. What if it doesn't pass?
Yeah. Just curious.
Give me a minute, Mike. You know, we, we have a future land use map, right? We have a compatibility ma- matrix. We have been nursing along our future land use map with five year updates to our comprehensive plan. Probably 10 years past when we should have. So the what if is, oh, we're already doing the what if. If this doesn't pass, we go back to what we had before. And the cause and effect of that, and we're seeing it, is we have a higher frequency of rezon requests. We have a higher frequency of type one rezon requests. We have piecemeal approaches to changing our future land use map. And we're doing it without, without benefit of current data and, and current terminology and current recognition of our situation. And so we're, we can go back to that. That's what we've been doing.
Will we try to pass this again with some changes?
So 2028 is the next comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Right? So the point of doing this, reason why it was step one and 23 was to have a community process where this was our focus. We weren't talking about all the parts of the comp plan. We were talking about future land use. Get that in place, start making changes to actually make this vision become a reality, whether that's zoning changes or neighborhood plans or corridor plans, or whatever those things are. And maybe even have a year or two under our belt of working with a new future land use map. And then when the 28 comp plan comes around, we'll have some performance data. And we get it right, we'll have 12 to 18 months maybe of seeing if it's working. And if it's not working, we have a comprehensive plan effort where we can, we can make adjustments to it. That was the, that was the scheme. That was what we were thinking would, would be an easier way for the community to wrap their mind around it, to feel like they still have control and an opportunity to, to maybe manipulate or change something that doesn't seem to played out well in the early going. But yeah, come 2028, we're going to have another comprehensive plan that we're taking up. We'll be working on it as soon as this is finished, we're going to start working on it. If that answers your question.
Definitely. And I'm sure it'll pass, I'm not putting out any bad advice.
Oh, it's a great, it's a great question.
You start with a new steering committee, the whole process starts over again. And is it as comprehensive as what we just went through?
So the comprehensive planning process, I mean, and we're kind of moving out of what this is, but that's okay. The comprehensive planning process, the next time we do it is going to have a different look than it has had in the past. I can't even tell you what it's going to be yet. This matters, like, so the outcome of this is going to affect how we approach the comprehensive plan. If this is finished, then our comprehensive plan can be more robust. We can dig into some other things. We can maybe engage with some other outside assistance to focus on special topics that were represented here. If this doesn't move forward, then we're kind of back to dealing with nuts and bolts. And, and we're still wrestling with big ticket questions that we feel like the steering committee wrestled with and represented on this map. So we can start getting into smaller areas of discussion and not smaller, but more focused areas.
Granular, yeah.
Housing, that's not granular, it's like, that's a big deal, but this could set the table for us to dig into that.
We go further, we elaborate and build on this. We're not starting from scratch where if this doesn't pass, we are starting.
Where if this doesn't pass, we are starting from scratch in 2020.
That's right.
Well, would one possibility be that in our deciding, if we decide to take a vote on this tonight, make a recommendation, is, is it appropriate or, yeah, is it appropriate for us to, where a recommendation is? Like the, the idea that they would, that they would just vote it down and it dies is kind of crazy to me. But can we recommend that that not happen? In other words, I mean, they can ignore us, but like, can we recommend that it comes back?
Vote a second or kind of like?
Well, that there's specific feedback given so that it doesn't just go by the mayor commission, that it comes back and can get.
So the mayor commission has the ability to remand things back.
Okay. Which they did with the short term rentals.
Very next topic on tonight's agenda.
We forget.
Remanded it back.
Can I make a?
Yeah.
I'm hearing a lot of support for this effort and these products in this room. And so I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the redocuments before us, the future, or the
Yeah.
Rainbow thing and rainbow thing, the map thing and the grid thing.
So not the rainbow.
Okay.
Not the risk.
Oh.
The actual text.
The text.
Right. The compatibility matrix and the map itself.
I revise my motion.
All second.
Okay. Ready?
So any further question, a discussion question?
Sorry, it's late. I'm going to get to notify which documents we are approved.
So the map itself.
Map.
The map, right? And then the compatibility text. Well, in the, that's the text.
Yep.
Right? That's right.
And the grid.
Matrix. That's three. Yep.
I, I will, I will add my two cents for a day of vote, which is just to say that in addition to the piece, if this is, if this is we do not adopt a new future land use map. In addition to it being bad planning, in the way that Bruce described, having to do everything piecemeal, I would also, for the benefit of whoever is listening and making these decisions, note that it is currently 9:14. We're not done. This is not the longest meeting that we have had in the past six months. And I know that the mayor commission meetings go on like that as well. Not only is this bad planning, it's everyone's time. And in the case of the planning staff who has to go through all these applications, it's everyone's money. That's what happens when we don't update our future land use. It costs, costs us all time and money. We've got to do this comprehensively and I hope that we can take, take the thousands of public comments that have been collected, the hundreds of hours of work that have been put into this by members of the community, not just staff, but in addition to staff. We can move this forward. So I don't have a vote, but that's my two cents. There you go.
All right. Motion to approve. Please.
Yes.
Beresford. Eric Hall.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
Yes.
Sams.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yeah.
Lower.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I know this is out of order and you can tell me that. But if I could ask for two minutes of personal privilege as a member of steering.
Does one of us need to make a motion for that sort of thing to happen or is that?
I could be through by now.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As a member of the steering committee, and I'm representing myself, but I feel confident that I'm representing other people. We, this may not come back here. We're praying it doesn't come back here. But I think this is an appropriate time for us to say to you that members of the planning department have been excellent as we've gone through this process. Much as in a family, we didn't get along sometimes, sometimes we did, sometimes we fussed, sometimes we hooked. But they have been superb resources. And I think we need to, to thank them for their work. I think it's appropriate for Bruce to call their names. And I, I, I just wanted to say that to this body.
Thank you.
I would second that.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to our last item of new business, short term rentals. Now, this is a
I'm sorry.
This is for discussion only tonight.
So
Comment.
Madam Chair, it's been brought to my attention that the agenda does note that there is a public input opportunity on this.
Yes.
With that in mind, we will go through this. I can tell you this was a discussion only and it was, it was kind of a listening session for the public, but I can see that we've advertised it for public input. So we'll follow through on that. So I'll go through my presentation and I'll step aside for the public to be able to offer their comment. All right. So a quick update on why we're here. So the short term rental program has been in existence since February of and in March of this year, we completed another milestone. March 1st was when the legal nonconforming list of short term rentals was, was finalized and posted. And that kicked into action, a key component of our short term rental program in Athens Clark County, which is a sunset period of 24 months as adopted. So that started, and that's for those legal nonconforming short term rentals that were in existence prior to adoption for a defined period of time by code. They are allowed to continue without permit. That's legal nonconforming. I just want to say that part out loud because that's key. The program also sets up a way for folks to get permits and to be conforming. And what we have before us tonight are really five topic areas that we're going to talk about, but our ordinance as it's set up creates two types of short term rentals. We have a home occupation short term rental and we have a commercial short term rental. One is defined as being essentially the opposite of the other. So this is, this could go very quickly. A home occupation short term rental. As noted on the screen, the applicant for those is the owner occupant of the property or a long-term tenant of that property owner. So that operator of that short term rental is either the owner occupant or a long-term tenant. The other rule with a home occupation is only one structure on the parcel may be permitted for use as an STR. There's only one STR permitted as a home occupation, not multiple units, one advertised unit. So just to make that clear. A commercial short term rental is not subject to those standards. And we have certain areas organized by zoning where home occupations are the way you can function as a short term rental. And you can do that through a permitted process administratively handled by staff. There are other areas where they're permitted by right as commercial short term rentals. And then there's a handful, item number two, that requires special use permit approval. Commercial short term rentals in the RM, the mixed density residential, the EO, employment office, and the AR zones require special use permit approval. We've seen a handful of those come through and I think that's where we've had a source of confusion and, and a desire for a little more specificity on, on how to make decisions about those special uses. But that is one component of what these ordinances were set up to be able to honor and allow for and permit. So as a bit of information, all of the short term rentals that we had operating at the start of this program, we did a heat map of those. So you can see the distribution around the community within the perimeter clearly is what we're talking about. But the east side has their fair share, the northwest side has their fair share. So it's not just a downtown issue. This is not just an in-town neighborhood issue, but it's certainly concentrated in those areas. So this is all of the short term rentals that were in operation at the start of this program, regardless if they had permits or not. This is everybody that was operating. This next image shows those legal nonconforming short term rentals, the folks that are on our list. And so it is a subset of the total, but you can see it's the bulk of the total. I think right now the legal nonconforming list comprises 711 units or operations, let's just say it that way, 711 short term rentals. If you're on that legal nonconforming list, it means you have not come through a permitting process. You're legal, but you haven't got a permit to operate. Now, every short term rental is required to pay their excise tax. And, and they're all required to have an occupational tax certificate. That's, that's a requirement for everybody. And that's, that's outside of the discussion here with, from the zoning standpoint. So I want to make sure that's clear. But if you're on that legal nonconforming list, you can function for the period of the sunset, which is 24 months, which started March 1st. So come March 1st of 2027, if you haven't gotten your permit, those operators needed to have recognized that that's the moment that they can no longer operate. Okay. So the short term rental program, we had five requested areas of study. The mayor and commission recently, when considering the text amendments that came through a couple of months back, they took action on a handful of those suggested text amendments, but they did not take action on any revision to the sunset clause, which there was an extension of that that was under consideration to go from two years to five. And they chose not to take action that night on the relief valve provision that was produced. And asked instead for it to come back to this body for discussion. So we're going to do that tonight. This group has asked staff to look at three other issues. To look at licensing of short term rentals, to discuss enforcement of short term rental regulations and how those operation expectations are handled by staff. And then third, to think about special use review criteria for short term uses. So that's how we got our five topics. I'm going to run through these really quickly. And then we'll come back to this because we have some discussion prompts that are on the next slides. So we'll, we'll come back to this once we have public comment wrapped up. Regarding the duration of the sunset clause for legal nonconforming short term rentals, there's really two, two questions that we kept hearing over and over. Is the adopted two-year timeframe too short or too long? And, and there's definitely a whole bunch of different thought on that sunset timeframe. Second question is, are there advantages legally, financially to having that timeframe be adjusted to an out year? Specifically, if you go to a five-year or a seven-year or 10-year timeframe, do you need a relief valve any longer? The purpose of the relief valve is to provide someone who bought a property with an expectation of operating a short term rental there to be able to have their investment backed expectations come back to them in a reasonable amount of time. And so the relief valve is one of those things where it was designed to provide for someone who may have a unique circumstance and can provide data to help demonstrate how it's unique in terms of those, the duration it takes to make their money back, just to say it bluntly. If two years isn't enough, if five years isn't enough, whatever it ends up being, this relief valve was designed for somebody to come forward and say, that's, that's not going to work. I'm going to plug in our data, which we had very prescriptively written out. It was very much like filling out your taxes, but it was all there. Provide the data and it will produce a number for you. And if that number at the end is beyond the sunset period, whatever it may be, you then have gone through the exercise for us to honor that number that's produced by the relief valve. There was a hard pause put on that concept. And so the question, the prompt that's on the screen is if the sunset period is extended, is there even a need for the relief valve provision? If there's interest in it, then we can dig into the wording of that relief valve and, and help everybody understand. But I think if there's not an interest in that, then we need to look at the timeline of that sunset period. All right. So licensing of short term rentals, this has come up a couple of times primarily as a way, one, to get data, to get an accounting of our short term rental uses helps with enforcement. But it's important to note that licensing provisions don't live in Title IX, which is where you find zoning and, and development regulations. So planning commission works on Title IX issues. Licensing exists elsewhere in the code and it's, and it's beyond the scope of, of this body. But we wanted to bring it back before you because you asked, and I think having the discussion is important. So is there, just to put the question bluntly, is there an interest in the licensing procedure? And, and if there is, this would be the, the night tonight to say yes or no, and, and to give it whatever qualifiers on that you may want to hear. I will say that from a legal standpoint, going through that process does present some challenges. And we can get into some of those things within certain limits in, in the discussion tonight, but it's, it's not as simple as go forth and make a license. Enforcement. So we noted this before, but I think it's worth saying again. A lot of this is being driven by the experiences that individual property owners that are neighbors of short term rentals are having. Not favorable experiences. And so the reason why we have an ordinance in the first place is to try to wrap our minds and our programming around this and, and try to manage it. So the whole point of this is to have some measurable and easily observable things when somebody's operating out of bounds. And the code is set up to help us with that, especially from a home occupation standpoint. I think it's pretty clear for the commercial short term rentals, they do function more or less as accommodations. They are commercial uses. That, that word is meaningful. And so we have a lot of code that tells us how commercial entities are supposed to operate. Those are the things that we're going to enforce if somebody's out of bounds. We have software that we purchased that helps us find short term operate, short term rental operations that are in locations that we know we don't have any recognition of. And it gives us an opportunity to do some education with that property owner and bring them through a process to get their paperwork taken care of. All of our enforcement starts with an education focus first before we get to a citation. And so we have that effort that we're working on. There was a suggestion about a three strikes rule, the bad apple rule. I've heard different ways of, of referring to it, but essentially when you have a routine offender, how are those dealt with? Again, this is outside of zoning. And we can talk about that, but anything that we have right now with regard to enforcement goes through the standard process that we do for any kind of code enforcement. And in this case, we have a short term rental dedicated code enforcement officer. And, and she has been working on this since day one and has some data that we can share during discussion of what they've been able to do in the last, well, since March and, and since adoption. So finally, special use review criteria. And I won't get into this too much now, but I do want to spend some time on it here after public comment. I think that there is some interest and I think there's some logic behind opening the door for some buy right opportunities for commercial short term rentals rather than having them live in a special use category to the extent that they are right now. If we do that as buy right though, we need to put some guardrails on it. And so what you have up here is some suggestions about maybe having percentages. You'll see a concept represented here about divided and undivided multifamily development. What does that mean? That's that recognition of the fact that we have a text amendment recently adopted that allows for condominiums to be considered as tax parcels, just like tax commissioner's office. They as being in their own parcel can, are eligible for their own short term rental use. So maybe if we look at multifamily development that hasn't been divided into condominium ownership, maybe there is something there that's qualitatively different. And I think we've definitely heard some special use requests for condominiumized, that's a term, developments as opposed to those that have not been. And maybe there's something there that we can look at that's a standard that allows for things to be buy right. And if you go beyond a certain tolerance that we can put in code, then you're a special use. Performance criteria for the, the commercial short term rental uses is something else that staff has been trying to look at other communities and, and think logically through for how things could operate here in Athens. Couple of suggestions there to look at, maybe there's qualitatively better places for commercial short term rentals to be physically located. Maybe there's ways that they interact with the other units as part of a, a multifamily development or as part of a neighborhood that we could put in place. But the two prompts here are, is there support for increasing buy right opportunities for commercial short term rentals? And is there interest in removing? And is there interest in removing commercial short-term rentals even as a permitted use in divided RM zone projects? Because those divided RM zone projects, as we've heard from public comment from right here, function almost like subdivisions. They function like neighborhoods. And we currently allow for home occupations to function in those neighborhoods. If you had a divided RM zone property, could you make the argument that it's like a subdivision, it's like a neighborhood, and the home occupation version of short-term rentals is just enough? Okay, we'll come back to these slides. I'm going to put maybe this back up here for public comment, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Okay. Now opening up to public comment, is there any member of the public here tonight who wishes to offer a public comment on this discussion of short-term rentals, for which there will be no vote tonight, just to be clear?
I know you're all shocked to see me stand up. Thank you for the public comment allowance. Had I known there would possibly not be public comment, then we probably wouldn't have been here. But members of the commission, I'm Joey Tucker, live at 138 Valleywood Drive. I'm the president of the Athens Area Association of Realtors, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the role of short-term rentals in strengthening, not weakening, our community. I'm speaking about the sunset and the need for more short-term rentals, not just home occupancy or commercial, but the ability to have a short-term rental within any zoning, and it should be a private property right. If we had a dedicated noise and parking ordinance officer, then we wouldn't have this problem. Because that is the issue that was brought before us first, and the whole reason we're here is for noise and parking and disruptance of neighborhoods. So if we had a dedicated officer there instead of one on short-term rental, then we would have already had this issue taken care of. Short-term rentals bring visitors who spend local money. They eat at our restaurants, shop in our stores, visit our hotels, go to the cancer center, classic center, family reunions, weddings, construction jobs, support our farmer's market, the hockey team, concerts. They benefit local downtown, they help keep local jobs, generate tax revenue that funds infrastructure and services like Wild Rumpus and other community events. Not to mention, they also support UGA and football, which is what most people think they're only used for is football game weekends. But that's not what they're mainly used for, that is just six weekends out of the year. Owners of short-term rentals have a vested interest in keeping their properties in excellent condition. Well-maintained homes enhance curb appeal and help neighborhoods. Any short-term rental owners also reinvest and upgrade in renovations, which support local contractors and trades. It brings tourism diversity. We are a community of diversity, right? Hotels can't meet every traveler's needs. Short-term rentals offer unique spaces for family homes, cottages, and attract visitors who might not come otherwise. This broadens our tourism base, making our local economy less dependent on seasonal hotel peaks. Short-term rental equals 30% of our hotel motel tax. Short-term rentals bring people from all over the country and the world into our neighborhoods. This fosters cultural exchange, keeps our town on the map as a vibrant, welcoming place, and often results in repeat visits and even future full-time residents who invest in our community. It offers flexible housing use for some residents renting their home. Short-term provides vital supplement income, helping them afford their mortgage taxes and maintenance. Short-term rentals are not just about tourism, they're about economic sustainability, housing preservation, and community vibrancy. With reasonable regulations, we can ensure that we remain a benefit, not a burden to our neighborhood. So I ask that you remove the sunset clause, and if you can't remove it, then push it 30 to 45 years. Then there's no need for the relief valve, it is essentially the length of a mortgage. So if someone buys the property, it's the length of their mortgage, then you're not having to get somebody from Atlanta, like last time, an attorney who didn't even live here, come up with a relief valve to submit to y'all to vote on, to tell you what the property value should be. We're letting the mortgage take care of itself if they're not allowing it. So I ask to keep, to remove the sunset, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public here to speak tonight?
Sure. Hi, I'm Jeff Ledford. I spoke to you last time, y'all talked about this. I am with Georgia Realtors here to help address some of the concerns. We have dealt with this issue in other areas and really to kind of serve as a way to advise on what might be a workable solution. We've heard the term "commercial" a lot in this. And I think I mentioned last time, this is not a commercial use, this is residential. And I did, I know there was some question about that last time, but there is plenty of court rulings from New Jersey to North Carolina on it, but I figured I'd look in Georgia. And yes, there are in Georgia. Short-term rentals have been deemed by the Supreme Court as a residential use. Backing that up, we can go back a number of years, and when you look at what qualifies as a residence, this is one of those things, the long-term residence versus a short-term, as far as a tenant. There was a case involving, it was, I think it was, so the short-term rental one was decided by Morgan County, B.M.A. And that was that they are a residential use. It's on the usage, not on whether you're making a profit on it, on how long something has to be for you to have it as a, qualify as a residence, or how many residences you can have. The differentiation between a dwelling and a residence, and whether it's residential use and the duration was also established in Dozier versus Baker. And so in that, one of my favorite quotes was, it said, "You don't have to live in your house for 30 days to qualify as your residence." On day one, it's your residence. So whether you are there for a day, whether you are there for 30 years, it can qualify as a residence as so long as you have the right to use it for that period of time for a residential use. If I were to look at a commercial use of a short-term rental, I think that would be if I'm renting it for a commercial purpose. I am, you know, rebuilding a motorbike there. I am operating an office, you know, kind of the office-by-office rentals, things like that. That would be a commercial use. But if I am there to house a single-family residential purpose, bringing my kids there to stay, I am there by myself, whatever, that is a residential use. So I do caution you to be careful with that because, back to the point of why this is important, there's a statute in Georgia that is very clear. You cannot have a registry of residential rental properties. That goes back to 2004. It's been a longstanding statute. It does apply for short-term rental equally, and there is a pending case in Tybee Island. And I really don't want to see y'all go into that because it's a dangerous area where if you adopt this, the next one could be then, you know, once that's decided, it could hit you, and you haven't done this yet. The sunset could address it, and also there is a way to do licensing without having the registry, and we would be happy to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my legs are asleep. Good evening, guys. I'm Nathan Song, I live at 330 Ansley Drive over on the east side, and I'm in support of getting rid of the sunset clause and, like Joey said, adding additional short-term rentals to Athens, Clark County. It's a vital part of our county. In my neighborhood, I can tell you that I have three of them in my neighborhood. I drive by two of them every day, twice a day, and give us no problems. They're the prettiest houses on the street. I live in a rental neighborhood primarily, and I can point out the landlords on there who have not fixed up, and literally the roof is needing to be replaced, the siding's falling off. Those are not your neighbors, those are commercial landlords that are way out there. I'm also going to talk on the sunset clause and property rights. So I'm going to use something, I'm going to say, I want everybody to picture their car and what color it is. I'm going to use blue, because my son's favorite color is blue. And he buys a car two or three years ago, it's in rough shape. He fixes it up, he's driving it, he's loving it, everybody in the neighborhood saying, oh, it's looking so great, it's looking so great. On the west side, another guy, he buys a blue car. He doesn't really fix it up, he's speeding down the roads, he's speeding through Five Points, he's throwing litter out, he's parking wherever he wants, he's turning up his radio. Do they go after that guy? No, you tell my son he can't have a blue car anymore. He's going to sell it. You wouldn't let that happen. Don't let that happen with the sunset. Don't tell property owners who are fixing up their property, who are playing by the rules, there are not by it, and there are no bad apples. There are bad apples out there, but there are ways to get rid of those bad apples. We can enforce those rules and get rid of them and still allow the 30% hotel tax that comes to the county where we can use it to use for affordable housing and anything else that we would like to do. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public here to speak on this item? Here it comes.
Good evening, and y'all volunteer for this job, that is amazing. But I do appreciate what y'all do, and it needs to be done. My name's Charlie Upchurch, and I live at 145 Tillman Lane, Athens, Georgia. I'm also a Realtor, I own Coal Banker Upchurch Realty. We've been in business since 1958 in the Athens area. I'm real proud of the business that we've got, and I love our business, it's great. And one of the things I like about my business is that, you know, look out for people's personal property rights, private property rights. That's what real estate's all about, you know, is allowing people to buy and sell homes and do commercial real estate as well. But so I always go back to, and y'all have heard me say this before, go back to when we decided, you know, there was going to be no more than two unrelated per household. You know, it was practically unenforceable. And it's hard to prove that who's there permanently and who's not. I feel like this is going to end up being the same way. It's going to be a hard thing to lease, to monitor. But there are ways, there's noise pollution, there's light pollution, all the things that we've talked about here for years and years, but thank goodness, and I've heard that they're going to have, hold on, not code enforcement officers, they've hired them. Clark County's hired them. If I've heard right, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but they've hired code enforcement officers to work nights and weekends. We should have had that all along, we should have had that all along, and that would have taken care of a lot of these problems. And then when we start talking about the sunset clause, you know, I think about Ad Drugs at Five Points. I love Ad Drugs, go there regularly, maybe too often. But when you go to Ad Drugs and you, you know, what if we were told, "Ad Drugs, hey, we want to do a drugstore in Athens, Georgia." Hey, yeah, come on, but we're only going to give you three years to run your drugstore, basically. So you got to make your money as fast as you can. And then, and then they've got, what do they do, they stop being a drugstore? You know, and so now we're telling people, this can be done. I understand why we're having these conversations. You can put limits on there, I say limits, you can put, I don't want them doing it if they're not paying taxes. So they need to register, and I don't know if that's the same thing as...
I can address that.
But they need to register, and so I need to give my time to him, he's a lot smarter than I am. But it can be handled by code enforcement, by the police officers, and I want to relieve my time to go back to a jail.
Basically, yes, you can do that, there actually is a new state law that's put in place, House Bill 399, which will address some of the bigger concerns with the corporate owners of these properties, not the mom and pops. But can answer any questions on that if you want.
And we sure don't mind helping either.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member of the public here to speak tonight on this issue? All right, with that being said, Bruce, did you want to roll back the tape? I understood you kind of sped through some stuff so we could let our gentleman here have their say after waiting so long.
Doing that, or am I?
I think you're done.
Okay. So the order that's on the screen was intentional, and it feels like the first two items are linked. So why don't we start with the sunset clause discussion? First of all, we've talked about this, we piecemealed it, and sometimes we lose sight of what's actually in the code. Does everybody understand the sunset clause that's with the short-term rental ordinance? If you do, that's fine, then that helps us move on. If you don't, let's talk about it. Okay. It is only for the legal nonconforming short-term rentals. Okay, so there's nobody else who's eligible for that. It only works for those folks that were operating prior to the code, within those limits that are specified in the ordinance. A new short-term rental property owner or operator is not eligible for the sunset clause. So right now, we have 711 properties on that list. The way it's worded right now with the timeframe, and the timeframe is really what we're focusing on. But even if the timeframe is changed, we haven't been talking about the other rules that go along with the legal nonconforming list that are in the ordinance. Namely, if it changes title, you're no longer on the legal nonconforming list. That, you know, changing title, selling to someone else, even reconfiguring your LLC to involve different people on the title is sufficient to no longer enjoy the benefit of that legal nonconforming status. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay, so first question, is the two-year timeframe too short or too long?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
If there is a complaint, whether it's noise, trash, anything, for somebody who's on that legal nonconforming list, there's actions, there's penalties against them, but it doesn't do anything to revoke their ability.
There's nothing to revoke.
There's nothing to revoke.
Because they have no permit. Once they have a permit, they're not on the list, they're not legal nonconforming, they're legal and conforming.
But if they kind of permit...
Nope.
What kind of permit are you talking about?
So...
Home occupancy permit?
The home, yeah, home occupation permit for a short-term rental or the commercial SDR, whichever category they fall into. Now, your question's about code enforcement, period. These properties are treated the same as any other property from a starting point on parking or noise or trash or anything else that is out of bounds by code, they're subject to code enforcement and...
But nothing would stop them from doing this usage if they continued to get...
I think like the last time, there was like a $1,000 fine was the most...
Similarly, if a grocery store keeps putting its garbage outside the dumpster, we don't shut down the grocery store. We deal with the garbage that's sitting outside the dumpster, right? So we treat everybody the same way when it comes to code enforcement. So nobody's business is shut down as a penalty of having something that's out of bounds with regard to noise or trash or parking, those types of things. We deal with the problem, and there are, if the problem's not resolved, there are penalties related to the problem, but it's not to the use of the property.
But that's not entirely true across the board, is it, right? I mean, if a business requires a permit to operate and the permit comes up for renewal, then surely the fact that they've been in repeated violation of a bar serving liquor to kids or, you know, a grocery store that...
So that's the difference between permitting and licensing. So a bar would have an alcohol license, an alcohol permit. So a permit gives you the ability to do the use, now go forth and do the use. And if you do it the wrong way, we deal with the circumstances of the whatever's out of bounds. We don't issue licenses for commercial uses, we don't issue licenses, there's no zoning license. And that's what can be revoked, and we don't have that. So all of our short-term rental regulatory language exists in the zoning code presently. And so there is no licensure that there are permits, and so we treat those permits the same as we do for anybody else. You're awarded a permit, you don't have to renew your permit, you just have to function under the rules of that permit, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense, and actually that kind of brings me to the comment I was going to make. Like, you know, it seems clear that bad apples are the problem here, and a lot of effort has been spent on trying to figure out, is there a way that we can allow the short-term rentals that are not a problem and that are enabling the county to, you know, deal with surges in hospitality needs, like when more people want to go for graduation or whatever reasons want to come to town, then there are hotel rooms. But there are clearly some bad apples, right? We've heard from a lot of citizens who have one of those short-term rentals in their neighborhood. And so I guess my comment is about what you just said, Bruce, but also about this concept that licensing is outside the zoning power and thus beyond the purview of this body. I think that's right, but the distinction you just drew between permitting and licensing, I just want to... I just want to kind of push back on that a little bit. Because in looking at the special use permit section of the zoning code, 9-20-6, which is squarely within the planning commission's powers, it says, "The conditions which the approval authority may impose include," on any special use permit, "include but are not limited to the following." And then there's a whole long list of 15 different types of conditions, including things like regulation of noise or similar nuisances, regulation, conditions pertaining to duration of use. And then the catch-all at the end, "any other conditions that will make possible the development of Athens Park County in an orderly and efficient manner and in accordance with the provisions of this, of this title." So I guess my question is, if the mayor and commission wanted to address the bad apple problem, but, but allow good short-term rentals to operate, could they not, could we not, in, in service of that goal, begin a practice of issuing special use permits with a durational limit? You know, you get a, you want a special use permit for your SDR, you get 24 months, and then you've got to reapply. And then in the reapplication process, a bad apple that has been the subject of a significant number of code enforcement visits and findings, that would certainly be something that the mayor and commission might take into consideration in deciding, yes, we're going to renew this guy's permit, but we're not going to renew that person's permit because this is a bad apple over here. And that seems, I don't know, exactly where the line is between permitting and licensing. But if we're allowed to limit duration and limit noise and similar nuisances, then maybe there is a way within the zoning code that we can focus our fire on the bad apples.
So that is not, nobody's getting revoked, which is kind of where the conversation's been. That's not revocation, that's just timing out.
Exactly. Everybody times out and reapplies. And there's just a streamlined process for reapplication that, you know, where...
And you're saying the factor for the next consideration of the next application for that same property
Could include the history of operations.
Of what's going on. I'm writing it down. It's an interesting idea. I, I think where, where it may, and I, and I'm just thinking and talking at the same time. If it's not the same person who's applying for that next special use at that same address...
But you're still going off the history.
You're, if you're using history, it's not their history. So that's kind of odd. We've heard a lot about the operator makes the difference. I think we, we get testimonies time and time again about the operator makes the difference. And, and I think you're, what you're getting at is a way for the operator to prove their, their worth and, and maybe be recognized for doing a good job by getting their next special use approved because that factor's been involved. It's an interesting idea. We're kind of jumping a question off the screen, though. So if you could focus on the sunset clause, these are the things I have to respond to. I'm just, these are all good ideas, and we're kind of spitballing. There's a, there's a slide for that.
Okay. So Bruce, are you liking this sort of popcorn interrupting mode of conversation? Is it good for you?
We need to stay topical so that we have a hope of getting this in the morning by 9:00 AM to the third floor of City Hall.
Yeah. So on, so a question that we are looking at, is the adopted two-year timeframe too short or too long for a sunset clause? Are there advantages to a longer one? Are you going to have something to say about this?
No, because I think this is kind of the wrong order because a lot of these issues could be addressed with the licensing question.
No, this one.
I think that it could. And just to back things up a little bit, you know, I'm sad that Kristen's not here tonight because she and I emailed about this a lot, actually. You know, and I emailed all the commissioners, and I went and had meetings with whoever would talk to me about this. So I tried to figure out what they would want, too. And I think we might be wasting our time a little bit by focusing on the sunset clause first because the impression I got is that everybody wants licensing. And so, you know, we could kind of direct...
Okay, if I may, if I may. As long as anything that we are, so, so are you saying that as long as there's licensing, we could get rid of the entire rest of the short-term rental regulations that we have put in place?
Well, kind of what I'm thinking, you know, especially after this conversation and the commissioners I've, I've talked to and stuff, you know, I don't think that this is a zoning issue. I think this is a regulatory issue and a licensing issue. And I don't think this is something that the planning commission is going to figure out. Because I don't think that it's, I don't think it's our, I think it's too big of a scope for this.
Okay.
You know, I think what we need, and Kristen took a lot of time in putting together a list of what other communities have done, you know, in licensing. And, you know, and I talked about that with the commissioners, and I made my ideas, and I heard their ideas. I really think that that's the direction that everybody wants to go in, that I've talked to, is the licensing. And, you know, I kind of asked a lot of questions about how we'd get to where we were and, you know, why do we have the ordinance the way we have it? And a lot of it was just like, you know, one commissioner told me very point-blank that they just thought this is like easy, they kind of got tired of it, and they just wanted to pass something, you know? And they thought that they're doing the licensing and the regulations. And, you know, she was like, having the politicians come up with it all was just like too much. And they just kind of settled on, on this, you know? And nobody really thought that it was like a great solution. And I think that's kind of why we're having all these problems now that we need to come back to is that I don't think this is the right, the right way that we're going about this necessarily. I think that we do need to think about what other communities have done. And they have kind of, you know, created a regulatory framework in licensing. And, you know, how this could help, I think, with, you know, the sunset clause in particular is that, you know, a lot of the pushback we're getting from, you know, all the people we heard from tonight is the sunset clause. You know, and I don't think that anything we're talking about in regards to the bad apples really addresses the, you know, the housing issue that a lot of the commissioners have said that they're interested in, like, you know, that it's affecting the kind of stock of housing in Athens. And I think the licensing could help this. And, you know, you could have like a certain amount of permits that you give. And, you know, if it like, there's like a more housing becomes available and we feel the housing's not an issue anymore, you could like dial up that number of permits or dial it down based on the amount of housing, you know? I think it would help with the bad apples because, you know, you would have to like, like a liquor license, you could lose, you could lose your, you could lose your, lose your license.
Yeah.
So I think that there's a lot of ways that we could address a lot of these issues through a licensing thing.
Okay.
And I have a lot more to say.
Okay. Alex, I, I see you. I may, I want to ask a question that may provide clarity to this conversation, or maybe not, and then we can let it go. And so this is maybe for our attorneys, if, if you guys have any, anything to do with this. So the regulation that Matt was talking about was through the zoning code. So we'll set that aside. Does the county license businesses? Does the, does the city, do the city or county municipal governments have licensing authority over businesses? Or is that something that is owned by the state?
So for instance, a good example is Title III of the Official Code of Georgia annotated. And that, that deals with alcohol licensure. And, and local governments are specifically given some authority to do licensing in the alcohol context. A lot of people call, a lot of people talk about business licenses. What those actually are occupation tax certificates. So that's all, you know, I think sometimes people use that term a little artfully. That, that's an interesting legal question. I will say that it, it can get kind of complex. We've, I mean, we've looked at that question before. You know, a lot of times, if, if counties and cities are licensing a certain business or a type of business, it's because they've been given authority in general law in the Official Code of Georgia annotated. So I, I don't want to give like a, a specific answer because it, it can get a little complicated on the ability of, of local governments to license things and things like that. But generally, it would be, what I would say is it's, a lot of times it's preferable if there's something in the Official Code of Georgia annotated that, that gives us some authority on that.
Yeah, otherwise it's a fight.
That's right. And sometimes, you know, you know, you do run into areas, too, where you, you, maybe the state regulates something, and then there's an argument about whether there's field preemption and all that kind of stuff. So it gets, it gets really complicated really quickly on that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it not accurate to say that we do license hotels in Athens?
We issue occupation tax certificates. I think we issue...
Like they do the hotel, hotel.
Hotel, motel tax. I, I don't think we, if we don't have a specific license that I recall...
We can't tell, we can't tell a hotel, you can't be a hotel anymore. You can tell you, like, you can't have anyone in here anymore because you haven't paid your taxes or whatnot, but not like...
We cannot issue a business, we cannot issue a business or an occupational tax certificate.
Which is, which is different than the licensing, which happens through the state, right?
Well, an occupation tax certificate is, is authorized under Chapter 13, Title 48 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated. There's some specific parameters around that.
Okay. So I, I guess to try to, try to not be on forever, Alex, you had your head up, though.
Yeah, I'm just going to answer the questions like you asked us to.
Thank you.
Question one. Adopted a two-year timeframe, too short or too long? It's too short. Does not give. That is the number one thing that fucked with everybody in my industry. It's loaded on the timeframe. I didn't think the mayor and commission would, would pass the whole thing because of it. So that leads to the next one. Are there advantages of five, seven, or 10? Those numbers probably need further discussion, and that's what we're doing here. But yes, it does. It allows people to get their money back on their investment when they thought they were able to do this. And then they found out they're no longer able to do it, like Mr. Upchurch's example of a pharmacy or ad drugs. So that's, that's been one of my, I mean, there are a lot of things I didn't like about any of this, but that was one of the big things that I, I think that needs to be extended or taken off or something. And again, I don't know, I don't know the year that that should be, but this is input for the mayor and commission to hear. And, and that leads me, and I'll hold my next thing on this relief valve. I'll wait till that, I'll wait till that shows up, so talk about that.
Great. I do think that there is probably enough people in this room are interested in regulating short-term rentals through zoning that we could probably have everyone answer this question. And your, your, your takes are duly noted. To this question, does anyone else have an answer to this question?
Too short. Oh, sorry.
I made a difference. Yes, too short. If we had to go, if we have to keep a sunset clause, it should probably go out closer to the seven or 10 year.
Absolutely.
That said, I don't think we need the sunset clause at all or a revit really foul if we could find another way to go in a permitting process or a regulatory way, which I think would be better.
Okay. So I'm hearing some little echo, echo, echo there. Carrie, did you have the same thing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's too short. I think it's, it's hard to say what's an arbitrary time, two, five, seven, 10. It's hard to say what makes sense. I think the longest term possible for me to make sense because, but I think we identified there's over 300 of these non-conforming that can never be conforming. And so I think it's for those people that, those people should be able to operate, I think, as long as they want to, honestly.
Okay. Any, anyone else who...
As long as they're not bad.
As long as they're, sorry, so sorry, so sorry. I, I miss, I miss the cadence there. I'm going to give my two cents, which is that I also think the two-year timeframe is too short. And I'm the one who proposed it. I thought for sure that the mayor and commission could change it after consulting with the attorneys. Because I think that what, that the difference between a two, five, seven, or 10-year timeframe is a question of legal liability. And that they should talk to the attorney, the attorney's office about that. And that's the judgment that I would take on it. Two frames too short, five, seven, 10-year timeframe. The advantages? Less, less jarring, less scary to people who had decided to get into the short-term rental business and reduces our liability. Matt?
I was just going to say that the, I, I too have come around to thinking that two years is perhaps too short. I think the principal advantage of going out to five or maybe even longer is doing away with the need for their relief valve, as Bruce discussed. The relief valve is at best, very complicated to administer. And the purpose of the relief valve is to eliminate the possibility of a claim for a regulatory taking, which the purpose of, the Supreme Court precedent on that that Bruce alluded to says, people have investment-backed expectations. And if you regulate them in a way where they've not been able to recoup their investment, then that may constitute a taking, right? And so the longer period of time of at least five years, I think vastly reduces the likelihood that anybody would be able to credibly make a regulatory taking claim. And thus, obviates the need to have a complicated safety valve. So I, I think simplicity argues for having a, a longer sunset clause, if we're going to have a sunset clause at all.
Are you going to give an answer to this question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me talk. I can talk.
I know you can talk. I don't have a problem.
But I, I think that the two years too short. I mean, I don't think that we should have any sunset clauses because I think that the whole trouble we're seeing is that we're getting sued by people who saying it's a taking and stuff. And once again, I think that all these people that would be sunsetted would totally love the idea of a license or a permit instead, that they could, if they were a good apple, they could continue operating. And, you know, if they're a bad, then it's some protection for the neighbors. So I, I really don't see a need for a sunset clause at all. I think there's a better solution.
Okay. Grandfathered and permanently? Got some opinion?
Permanently, they would still get, they'd have to get their license. And if they were bad, they would get it revoked. So it's not, nothing's permanent because there's always the chance that if you're a bad apple, you could lose it.
Okay.
At any time.
Okay. Let's, let's...
But if you're a good apple, you get to continue indefinitely.
Let's move on. Maybe the next question is about licensing. Maybe not.
I know it's not. That's number three.
Relief valve, right?
Where do, have we, have we, if the sunset period is extended, is there a need for a relief valve provision? Does anyone have any additional brief responses to this question? I will say, so the question is, is there a need for the relief valve? The premise of the question is the sunset period is being extended. Relief valve. And my, my very brief answer to this is this, basically the same as the last one, which is, is a question of legal liability. I think that the mayor and commission should defer to the attorney's office. Mike?
I don't think that there's a need for a relief valve just because I think it's overly complicated. And I think it gets into the, the area of like, you know, when does the government ever guarantee you get your investment back? You know, I would say that these, these people open their business in an uncertain regulatory atmosphere. You know, I'd say that any sort of commercial operation was never allowed in a residential area. So I kind of don't see the need for a relief valve at all because I think it's just, you know, what about a relief valve for the neighbors who now have a bad apple next door? You know? So I think it's a little bit unfair to protect the investments of one sector of the population and not protect everybody's investments. So I'm just against the relief valve as a general thing.
Okay. Let's, let's go around. Alex?
So I think it also depends on how long the extent, how long it's extended. So I think the relief valve is a terrible idea for a multitude of reasons. So calculation has to at least take it out far enough at a minimum. I don't know what that is because I left my calculator at home. That, that has to be considered.
Okay. Matt, do you have anything to say or you want to pass?
Nothing to add.
Carrie?
Relief valve, terribly hated, really complicated, wasted time.
Okay. Want to do anything else?
That's not necessary.
Okay.
Nope.
I agree with Carrie exactly on the relief valve.
I agree with Carrie exactly on the relief valve.
Okay.
So nobody likes you.
For the question.
Right, so for clarification, nobody likes the relief valve, then it seems like the mathematical challenge. Is at a minimum, what sunset period duration is necessary? To eliminate the need for the relief valve. Is that fair to restate?
I don't know if there's any. And then there's no need for sunset, which is my response.
It's, it's so different for every case. That's the thing I run into. It's like, you know, what if somebody like super overpaid for their house and now they're saying they need like twenty years to recoup their investment like? It just doesn't make sense. There's too many, there's too many variables for like making your money.
So the good news is we do have a finite number of people impacted by this.
Yeah.
Right? So we have a sample size that is known.
Yeah.
Um of those, the analysis could be done. To kind of ballpark some of those things. I'm not saying to the point of like, by God, this is it. But within a reasonable tolerance plus, like, you know, so I. I'm, I still think, here's, here's my question. What I'm asking is. If there's universal support amongst this group that the relief valve is not something you're in favor of. Then if there, to Sarah's point, if there's a legal need to still cover our bases with the sunset clause. Then the math needs to be done to figure out what is the length of that sunset clause that does the job.
Is there a question there?
Do you support that statement?
I don't know.
Does the math need to be done?
Or if you're asking if there's one set period that we could agree on that would work.
No, 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 should it be discovered by math, not by us right now?
That's right. That's my question. I'll talk to.
Yes, I'm gonna say yes.
I think that you're asking is should math be used to determine generally the length of the sunset, not. Yeah, it's so it's sort of like.
Then everybody's getting a different sunset.
No, 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 one, one sunset.
Yeah, well, I mean, I know the relief valve, the point of the relief valve was to, like, some people get longer, some people get shorter.
You put it out far enough to where everybody's math works, that's what.
I, I, I think what Bruce is saying is if you were able to model it to a reasonable degree of certainty where you could say if you have a relief valve, or excuse me, not a relief valve.
A sunset.
Mixing, mixing things up here. A sunset clause that goes out to a certain amount of time and you feel relatively comfortable that for. Most businesses of this type, that they would be able to recoup their investment within that period of time. Sure, there may be an outlier, but for the vast majority of them, we, we are fairly certain using modeling that that, that you could put it out that far. You know, are you comfortable with that concept where we could?
Sure.
I mean, that's.
Raise your hand if you're comfortable with that concept.
If we had to have it in place, is what you're saying. Yeah, we had to have sunset clause in place. Is that the concept? Sure.
If you are uncomfortable with that concept. What do you have to say?
I wanna add, if I may, to that, so staff hears this, though. So here's the next issue with investors. I've taken, when I invest in this, I'm not investing in that. So I choose to invest in this. I didn't invest in that. So it was fine to do this five years ago or whatever years ago. And. To me, there's the reason I don't like sunset also is. If. Recoup, it's, it's not just a matter of breaking even. I don't, I don't think that's a fair thing to throw that just. Okay, I've got five hundred thousand invested in this by this amount of time. Soon as I hit five hundred thousand, I get it back. Well, you didn't get anything for the ten years it took. Or whatever that took. So. I know we're not doing their investing for them, but they legally made an investment that, that now the county said that's illegal. That, that's why I just, that's just one more reason that this, we, we tighten that sunset. Whether it's fifteen years or ten years, which, I mean, we loosen it, but not enough. We still interfere with somebody's investing. That is a reasonable thing for someone to be upset enough to hire some help on how to deal with that with the county. That's my fear. That's, we, we still hadn't gotten out of that, like we're, we're almost out of the thorns. But we still just left that one. So I'm, I'm telling you that. I'm not asking for any back push on that.
I would interest.
That'd be a consideration in the math.
I have a question for. Just. Curious, like, in terms of like recouping your investment, like when we bought, like when, in the past, buying a residential house. Like you recoup your investment by selling it and it was either higher or lower when you bought it, that is still. Like the option that is available to these owners and it was the same option that's always been available to homeowners. Like there was never this. This idea in the past that you had to have some sort of like value on top of the actual real value of your property when you're buying a residential house. So. I think we're kind of crossing into admitting that these are commercial operations because we're talking about having to recoup. Investment on top of just the real property investment. So I'm kind of curious, like, what's the, I'm not saying this is any kind of like value statement. I'm just saying that like, you know, I still think that that same. Like recouping your investment still exists based on how like I would recoup the investment on my house. Just as a thought, I don't know.
I have a comment. There's been benchmarking done about this very topic, right? Has that been filtered into these, these questions and responses already? Cause I, I feel like we're starting from ground zero when we don't have to and there's just so many options and ideas floating around and it's really, it shouldn't be that complicated. We should be able to make a clear decision based on fact based statistics that work in other areas.
And, and that was the nature of my question is. If. We, if it's okay and if we're directed to do so, go, go figure out that number. Do the modeling, as John said. Yes, there are ways to do that. And frankly, the relief valve math that was put together anticipates precisely that, that process. So, and, and it was done by experts in the field, folks that don't have skin in the game here locally. It, it wasn't pre-cooked. And so we have a pretty clinical step by step guide. To do exactly that, that we drafted. So that, that is. Full disclosure, that's, that would be staff's next step is to use. That tool, if it's not going to be part of the code, we will use it to reverse engineer. A sunset duration. That accomplishes the legal end goal that, that we think is important.
I think there's a couple of big things, like. We are assuming that it's government's responsibility to um. That a person who buys a house to recoup their investment.
What about all the other?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hon. Talk, cross talk.
Let me reply to that. The relief valve math. Took that into account.
Yeah.
So, you know, what Alex is saying, but also the counterpoint of Mike and your counterpoint, it's folded into that. So we're. We're gonna be okay. Like I, you know, and we weren't gonna spend a bunch of time and kind of pull that apart, but we can if we need to, but. I'm suggesting that the mechanics that we put together does produce a number. It does do it in a way that. Is legally defensible to talk about investment backed expectations. From folks that do appraisals, from folks that work in the real estate world, that's why we did it. So. If the relief valve is a overreach or it's not, y'all aren't comfortable with it, fine. We may still use it to revisit the sunset duration. And, and arrive at a comfortable number as a proposal.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we should resist very hard any temptation to try to figure out how to calculate. The relief valve, which is a lot of what I'm hearing talking about. I think the, the question is simply. If there is to, if we're gonna get rid of the relief valve by having a longer sunset. Um do we approve of the idea of staff, you know, using uh math? To figure it, to model it and figure out, how do we make sure that almost everybody at least gets their investment back at expectations back? And I think my answer to that is yes, and, and talk about um. You know, uh how to figure out. Whether somebody's made money or not, or whether. The government has any responsibility to worry about that is beyond the scope of this question and. Um beyond the scope of what I think we should be talking about at any time of day, much less ten, twenty at night.
Yeah, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm going to say, uh, I wish I had a whiteboard. Cause I, I feel like there's a visual here. Bring us up to order. So we're saying the relief valve terribly, too complicated to be, eh, too complicated to be an ordinance. Relief valve kind of creates a return on investment like curve. Lot of really specific data points. We use all that math that creates that algorithm. And use it to create an average. That's, that's very high in that sunset. Period, right? So like. Relief valve says most, you know, our scatter plot lands us at seven years, for instance. So then you'll have probably some people who can keep on operating that air, you know, that Airbnb long past the relief valve would have paid them for. They'll recoup more than their investment because of the specifics of the math that we won't get into. But it's better to have that simple law that gives a lot of people the benefit of the doubt. The benefit of a little extra time than it is to have a very complicated law that gets very specific with it.
I was, yeah.
I think the modeling provides consistency and I think that's what's most significant. When making these kind of decisions for people's investments in their lives. Any investment is risky.
Yeah.
Any investment is risky.
Consistency on a rational basis.
And on, and a rational basis, correct.
Hey, it also guarantees that it's a, that you're supposed to make a profit on this or recoup your investment. You know, I would say that there's no guarantee that any. Any investment is not germane to the, to the. Well, I think that we're assuming that we're giving that.
You're doing it again.
I think that we're saying that Airbnbs are guaranteed to make back their investment or not.
You're going off topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, is it?
Right, no.
We're not saying that.
I think you guys are being mean. I don't think it's off topic.
Yeah.
I really don't.
Yeah, shut up.
I, I, I think you, what Mike is saying, what I was saying is like that there's this, there's this assumption that's being made. That it's a value judgment that this group hasn't talked about.
Yeah, like there's a guarantee that it's a good investment. I'm saying that maybe an Airbnb is not a good investment and you lose money. Like, why are we saying that the, that we have to assume that they have to make back their investment at all?
Because the attorney's office has advised the mayor and commission and us that the United States Supreme Court has said. That when an investor is regulated out of a business, that. Investment backed expectations is part of the test of whether a. Taking has occurred. There requires the government to write them a check.
Which is why I'm against the sunset.
Final test.
But this is, this goes back to the discussion of the sunset clause and licensing, because I would say this whole discussion is a waste of time. If we just had a licensing permitting system, we wouldn't. Be taking anything from anybody. I can't wait to get to the licensing. Well, we should start with that, like I said. Then we wouldn't waste time on this stuff. I would.
We have all these.
Three more. We have three more.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, we're talking about people that did something legal and the government changed the rule and made it illegal. To do what they were doing. That's my, that is the legal problem with. But hey, hush. Whether they make money or not is no one's problem. When you buy something. And you want to make money, whether it's an Airbnb or leasing out. Long term, it's up to you to make the money. But when the government changes the rule, that's what got all of this going. So I'm just saying that and I'll be quiet again.
I think that's assuming that.
Right.
There we go.
We are moving on.
Okay, I still have a counter opinion.
Okay, question, question. The question is, is there a licensing procedure for the short term rental operations?
Their interest.
If there, is there interest? Raise your hand if you're interested.
Sure, let's hear some down, down the road, not tonight, let's hear more about.
Okay, raise your hand if you are interested. Let's get a count. Let's see, do we have consensus? Okay, raise your hand if you're not interested.
I'm half interested, like I'm, I'm interested, but I'm not saying I like it.
And, and here's what I'm gonna say before I move to the next slide. Licensing requires terms of eligibility for licensing. Right? Not everybody gets to have a license. So I'm just saying that out loud.
Yes.
This is not. It's not maybe the, the full extent of the answer that maybe folks might anticipate. So we will work on this. Okay. Enforcement. So again, this, this body. This was a comment, this was a concern. Um I wanted to walk you through what we've done. We've got some data points. That got just as the meeting started this evening about what we've done so far. Um if I could let you know what those are really quickly. Um there have been several hundred warnings for nuisances at properties that are, have. Are, are identifiable as short term rental operations. Now, warnings for those nuisances or violation are for all kinds of things. Parking, noise, trash, everything that may or may not be associated with the short term rental operation itself. Especially where their home occupations, it could be. A person who lives there, who owns the property is the source of the violation. But. There have been several hundred in the time that we've had this ordinance that uh code enforcement has worked on. That is per address. So another thing to point out. Sometimes we have an address that has multiple short term rentals and there are violations, multiple violations for that one address. So the number starts to go up when you have. And I won't name special, specific properties here tonight. But we have multiple unit properties where the vast majority, and in one case, all of the units are short term rentals. Every single one in the building is a short term rental. And, and there have been compliance issues at those properties. Um thirty nine citations have been written. Thirty five of those came into compliance before their court date. Four are currently pending. All right. Um sixty eight total code cases have referenced or cited STR. Uses or STR related issues. So I'm throwing out some numbers. We're, we're idling either below fifty or below a hundred, depending on the scale of severity. Um and that really has been, that level of enforcement has really been taking place since the legal nonconforming list went live on March first. So that's the frequency. Some of these predate that. I don't want to overstate that, but the vast majority of these. Have been working since March first because that's when we kind of eased out of pure education mode and more into enforcement. All right. Um so we do have a dedicated staff person. The mayor and commission have asked for and. I think, I think the, the position that is working more than. Uh Monday through Friday, seven to five. The funding for that actually hits. Halfway through the year. So that position wouldn't come online until the new year because the money's not there to hire somebody until the new year. But that is a first to have a position like that, that's functioning beyond normal business hours for code enforcement. Part of that justification for it was for short term rental, but it wasn't exclusively for short term rentals, by understanding. Uh because there are other things that go into these ordinance violations. Parking, noise, trash. Those aren't short term rental violations. They are ordinance violations of a broader sense. Is there anything else about enforcement? That either you kind of want to get on the record, get off your chest or, you know, but I, I, I think this is an opportunity to kind of say those things. There's not much more at the moment that we're proposing, other than getting that staff person online in the new year. And focusing on the ordinances that we have on the books.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If we move or if we all collectively want to see licensing of some sort, but the licensing itself is out of our purview, how do we answer your question?
About enforcement?
Yeah, because it sounds like we could tell, we could say more things that we want to see enforced. But there.
Yeah.
We don't jeopardize that.
So licensing, if that were something that were to come into existence, offers another opportunity for another enforcement. That's very true. Any, any sort of pursuit of language about licensure is going to involve some understanding also of how to enforce that and administer it. So we can deal with that as we're drafting that. And I think, is that fair? Awesome? Okay. A good question. All right, anything else on enforcement? All right. So this is what I thought was gonna be the fun one, y'all. All right, so special use review criteria. This one's been tough to work our way through. The issue we have at hand is we have special use criteria that is pretty generalized. It's, it's meant to be a one size. It's all lists of things to consider for anything that's a special use. We have one example in the code where we have additional special use criteria for something that is unique. That's related to airport operations because we have a different concern about safety and. The operations of the airport have different factors that go with it. So we have. An example already in our code where we have developed unique special use criteria. For things related to the airport. The suggestion here is perhaps we could have some unique criteria. Related to short term rentals that would help sift through. When we can support a yes and when we can support a no. All right. Having said that. Logical next question is if we can find a pathway to say yes. Is that not a reason to put in the code to just say yes and not have to go through a special use process? So maybe there's a better way for me to state that. Is there a way for us to revisit? How and where short term rentals are allowed? And we're talking in this case specifically about commercial short term rentals, ones where there is not an owner occupant.
Are you talking about a certain zone?
Could be. Yeah, could be. The focus right now, I mean, we, we're struggling with RM as a general rule. But, you know, it could be something else somewhere down the line. You know, our special use requests have been for the RM. Right? We've had one uh AR. And it, it went through with very little discussion.
And do we have any special use in place for commercial zones?
Sure.
And I mean, for STRs and commercial zones?
No.
So is there any regulation about STRs and commercial zones at all?
Commercial, no. Now, there's regulations. Here's how you do them.
Okay.
Right? But.
Yeah, but they they can by right, you could.
You come through a process. It's administrative.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is that? Is that that administrative process that's you registering or you?
No, not.
Not registering, sorry, I use a bad word, but what what are you doing? What are you, let's say you already have a commercial, um, use that has some residential units in it. If you want to start renting those residential units out that you don't live in, you're an owner.
In a commercial zone?
In a commercial zone, do you have to do anything?
Code has a process for that. That's not special use.
And that's just an administrative, what are they coming in and doing?
No one's done that yet.
But what would they do theoretically?
It'd be plans review, i- i- as as we would treat any other commercial use.
But if it's already, if they're not really changing.
They'd have to change something. So if you take a storefront and make it a place where somebody's going to spend the night, you're going to have to do something.
Well, I guess I mean something for like CN, where you might already have residential units there. Let's say you've you've got residential units there, you've got twelve of them, you've always rented those out long term, and you decide you want to do short-term. You aren't really changing a use. Do you do anything?
Now, sometimes the the use change isn't isn't super involved. Uh, you know, if if, um, we have maybe a high-rise example is a good example. You have a high-rise that was built, pretty aggressive building code standards, fire and safety standards, all of those things have been met for the apartment building. Those same standards largely meet what you would look for for overnight accommodations that aren't for long-term occupancy. They're for short-term occupancy. You may have checked a bunch of boxes. There 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 are some other paperwork-related things, like, um, your certificate of occupancy would be different. Um, that may have different things from a building code standpoint to keep up with.
Okay.
But more or less doing the paperwork and coming through plans review, because if it's code compliant to be an apartment building, it's really close, if not exactly the same, to also function as a short-term rental. But it's a different use classification, and so we have to update that and and make sure we go through that process to make sure everything's there, especially if you have an older building. If it was built at a time when some of the current codes weren't needed, but now you you want to shift into this short-term rental commercial function, there may be some upgrades you have to do for fire building.
If you are changing from long-term, so you're what you're describing also applies, you're changing from long-term rental to short-term rental?
Correct. The duration of of stay we've got as a use change in our.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I would just like to briefly uh, address something that I don't think has been addressed yet. Uh, because I've just heard unchallenged over and over and over again that the only thing we care about is bad apples. If it weren't for these bad apples, no one would care about short-term rentals. That's just categorically false. Half the reason we started doing this whole thing when we started doing it was because of the impact of short-term rentals on the price of housing and the availability of housing in Athens Clark County. Not to mention the cultural impact that it has on the neighborhoods where it hits hardest in that heat map. Uh, so this is the the really the first thing that we're talking about. You know, I think, uh, when when it comes to when it comes to grandfathering, when it comes to the sunset clause, when it comes to the relief valve or whatever, that all exists in in one category of affecting people who have businesses and how you feel about it. This is a thing that continues to have that impact on which housing units of of of, you know, of which we still have a shortage are being removed from the, uh, the actual residential market. So I I support. I I do support increasing, uh, by right opportunities because I can see some use for these units in RM and AR zones, and it is clearly untenable that we continue to take these on a special use basis. But I don't know, there's just the there there's got to be some way to to stop the the flood, you know what I mean?
Make them no.
Yeah, okay, actually, yeah. Um, that's 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 right. That's right. Yeah.
You could make them a non-permitted use.
Yeah, I think it actually, especially in AR zones, because when we're talking about AR zones, a a a ho- ho- owner occupancy in AR makes sense. You're talking about your your own house that you rent out, you're talking about your your ADU or whatever. For short-term rentals in AR zones, that makes sense. In RM, I think that whatever we have in single-family, we should apply to RM. Maybe with the exception of downtown. Maybe with the exception of downtown. That's my opinion.
I would support limiting or outright banning in the in the RM, because for what you said. I mean, the bad apples are not the only objection that we've had. Um, in AR, I don't have any problem with them being done by right. I feel like they're out there, they're not impeding anybody else necessarily around them. The one that we approved felt like a good use for that. So when they're a little bit more secluded, I think it's less of an issue than in the RM and less of an opportunity to take a unit away from a long-term rental. The other thing that I would add here, and this came up on Tuesday night's meeting, it feels rhetorical, but because we sat through Woodlake a couple of weeks ago last month, we should also include that if the HOA prohibits this, they can't go any further with the special use permit, because we did all sit through this, mayor and commission sat through. And and it seems like they should have never been able to use that special use permit, because the HOA didn't allow for it. So I don't know.
Body of that decision.
Yeah. So.
Um, coattailing that, uh, I guess the the HOAs are probably, I'm sure there's a lot of legal work being done and a lot of HOAs, and I can check around, you can check around people in our office a little better, because that is, that outgoverns municipalities. So if they say you can't do it, then we can do here to help you out. Um, so I would say most of that just falls in line with the HOA. And but I will also say just look at all the for lease signs. When you go home or go to work tomorrow compared to two years ago, it I say it every meeting, and I'm going to say it every meeting, and you're deeper into that than I am. It's it's all over the place. There is a lot to lease and a lot to purchase in this town. And it affects my life livelihood right now. People aren't buying quite as fast. So it's to 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 just lay it on that, um, short-term rental is affecting the market. I still haven't seen the proof of that, and I'm living the proof that it is not affecting, right? It it touches it. It touches it, because everything touches the market. But it is not the cause of the rental situation out there. And I I would love to see the proof that it is the cause of the of of housing not being affordable. It took off long before, um, the rental, short-term rental hit. It just it spiked and people are doing things, and that's where the market went. Anyway, um, I do want to bring that back into the fact that that it is, it is not the cause.
I I will say that in our original discussions, I think it was never, you know, pinned, not, I don't think. I will, certainly, there are some people out there who have said it is the cause. And I was, I have not, was not one of them, and I don't think anyone in this planning commission, president or past, was was one of them. You're right. Um, I will also say, just from a logical perspective, uh, the the fact that this is affecting your livelihood does it does explain why we have so many people from the Association of Realtors every time we talk about this, because it seems to impact Realtors more than, uh, more than anyone. And it's, I, there are many factors to this. All these for lease signs started going up. In my neighborhood specifically, I have seen many for lease signs go up on places that used to be short-term rentals. With the like, the the fact that we are seeing all these for lease sites popping up, I'm not saying it's because of our short-term rental regulations, but I will say that we started seeing it after we enacted them, which doesn't, you know, the 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 sunset and the grandfathering doesn't happen, but it has already taken effect for these purchases. And that makes it, and you know, it's see, we're seeing it nationwide to an extent. I know that there's a lot of causes. What's not so good for Realtors is better for people who are trying to buy a house or even lease one. And I mean, we've been in we've been in, uh, buyer and renter death mode for so long. I don't think, I don't think the pendulum, because I I don't think we're, I don't think we're we're close enough to to that to the other side being a problem.
Okay, so did we answer your questions on this?
I could go about twenty minutes on that, but I'll I'm gonna hold up on that.
Yeah.
I deal with, I do the long-term rentals, David, so have some insight, but I'll I'll save that for another time.
Thank you. I I this is, well, uh, I promise, because we could do that all on.
But I but I do have a.
Sorry.
No, you're still talking. I'm sorry, you keep going.
I do have a perspective to share at some one that I think has some value, but again, it's work and let it, so I won't. I'm gonna shut my mouth tonight, so.
So I I do, the short-term rental thing does not affect my income. I don't deal in short-term rentals.
I don't.
I I do, I I want to make sure that that part was clear. The the fact that the market is saturated like it was, you know, six years ago is is what I was.
So so what's on the screen? Uh, I'm going to try to summarize here and and you can tell me, no, this is cracked, or this is worth looking into a little bit further. The notion of having something that that provides for a by right opportunity in the RM zones, that it's just not a straight special use. Um, I heard comments saying they shouldn't be allowed in the RM at all, so I'm hearing that viewpoint. We're also hearing the sentiment that if you are in a, um, an aging or or not even that old, uh, apartment complex, and there's one or two units out of the ten or twenty that are functioning as a commercial short-term rental, is that okay? And, you know, some people kind of shrug their shoulders, we're, you just sort of read the room, you get different reactions. So the notion here was coming up was, in response to those different reactions that we were hearing and seeing, maybe there's an allowance for up to for ten percent of the less of the units in an undivided, and I keep wanting to point out why I'm using that term, those that hasn't gone condo, right? So it's still got one property owner and everybody in there has a lease, that one property owner. So it's an undivided multi-family development. If ten percent of those units are allowed by right, up to ten percent as a commercial STR, and and we're talking about RM zones predominantly here, is that okay? Um, and then what we picked here was ten percent, ten percent already exists in the code for some for some latitude. Ten percent is one of those things, it's like, there's even some things that that there is planning director discretion for up to ten percent of a variance on a setback or a party amount. So rather, so that number exists in there as as a reasonable metric, and so we we picked that. And then from ten percent to twenty-five percent, maybe that requires special use approval, and anything beyond twenty-five percent is no. If you get beyond a quarter of your development as commercial STR, that's no. And twenty-five percent also exists in the code. That's something we use with regard to residential density. We have a standard saying no more than, uh, twenty-five percent of a multi-family development can have four-bedroom units or higher. So we're already, that that kind of feels the same almost with the occupant load aspect of short-term rents. So that's why we said twenty-five percent.
I like that.
Yeah, I I hea- heard and totally agree with what Sarah and Jen were saying about RM that single-family homes or homes on a parcel in RM one zones should be treated like homes in RS zones. I'm thinking of like Hancock Reis, where it it's zoned RM, but it's not really multi-family, it's just small homes on small lots. Like, those should be treated the same as RS. But what you're talking about, where you've got a twelve-unit property or a thirty-unit property, um, allowing it as a right in those sort of situations does make a lot of sense. It's owned by an, you know, a a single owner who has every incentive to make sure that um, the short-term rental people are not noisy or leaving trash everywhere, because he's got long-term tenants to keep happy. And so I think that's one kind of low-hanging fruit way to uh, streamline the process and reduce the number of special use permit applications with no real harm. So everything you said makes a lot of sense to me, including that ten and twenty-five percent cutoffs. You know, that all seems, uh, very reasonable.
So another idea that's been floated is that one option by right would be if you were between ten percent and twenty-five percent, you could get commercial STRs if you also provided an inclusionary zoning unit. And what I've got on the screen is a one-to-one ratio ratio on that, just to get the conversation started as a concept. But if you got, if you wanted to get to fourteen or fifteen percent, well, anything north of ten percent, you've got to provide one inclusionary zoning unit for each CSTR unit that you're proposing. And kind of came up with this based off of some of the comment we've had from the podium from property management, honestly. And the cash flow, I'm paraphrasing, the cash flow of of a commercial short-term rental is functioning at a pretty high level than just normal rents. So maybe that's justification for taking something and you want to be able to function that way beyond ten percent by right. Let's use that to offset a reduced rent for somebody else within that project. It's a thought.
Worth, I think we're thinking about.
And and there wouldn't be a payment in lieu associated with that. If you do it, you're also providing the unit. You're not paying into something in in exchange.
And so would this special use that would go through the commission or something?
By right.
Do it administratively or?
Administratively. That's the idea, is this is another way to not have to go through a special use, it would just be in the books to be able to do this, and it's using a tool we already have. Um, another thought is to say divided multi-family developments. And I I mentioned this earlier this evening. Those that are condo parcels, treat them like a subdivision. And and maybe that's the situation where it's a no. You can do it as a home occupation, but not as a commercial short-term rental. It it needs to be owner occupied to be able to do it if you're in a divided, parcelled, multi-family development. So moving down the list, some performance criteria, and and this is where we're like, okay, if if we come up with criteria and you meet the criteria, why do you need to get a special use? So the thinking here is, all right, what if we had performance criteria about placement of the commercial STR? Just for conversation. Um, what if we said specific placement says, within a multi-family development, those need to be towards the right-of-way or towards the entrance, not at the back of a development? Do it that way, there's no question. You want relief from that standard, that's a special use. And so now we have something that we're measuring against.
Seems like we're getting the weeds.
You're starting to micromanage and getting the weeds a little there.
It would be nice to narrow down the discussion and get into the weeds on something that's actually measurable. And that's the point, is if we're if we're going to do this right now, the special use discussion is not in the weeds at all. It's it's open-ended, it has no form, it has no guardrails, it has no substance. The notion here is, we're saying these places are okay, this placement's okay. You want to do something different and you want to go above these other metrics?
You know, so so let's, let's be honest, an apartment complex with twenty units, um, I feel like we could reasonably just leave it to them to decide which units are optimal for short-term rental usage, and I would just hesitate to um, restrict that person's property rights for no clear benefit, like it, you know. Uh, I just don't see the the benefit of saying it has to be on the public right-of-way. And and if you're talking about an apartment building, then a prohibition on sharing a common. And and if you're talking about an apartment building, then a prohibition on sharing a common wall means you can't do it in an apartment building, so I don't.
Fair enough.
Like grasp the.
I got you with that. It it's it's difficult to come up with something measurable when you have something that the 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 substantive difference is the duration of use. And in some degrees, the occupant load that happens in these. That that's, you know, an apartment has two people living in it. It could have two short term renters. Are we worried about that one? No, we're worried about we're worried about when there's more the bad apple sort of thing, but we need to have something measurable if we're going to review it upfront. Otherwise, we're always reacting to the performance, which brings us back to the licensure idea, right? So I get it. The notion here is that if we the special use experiment seems to be breaking down. And so trying to either completely abandon it, which is not on the screen as an option. Could be, that's a question, should these ever be a special use? I'd have the answer after discussion of saying no. No, they're not, it's either they're either allowable by right within certain tolerances or they're not.
Yeah, I think that I I see where you're going. And basically of the measurable standards that you have put forward, the ones in number four, so like 10 to 25% sounds like a great idea. The ones in four less of a good idea than the than the ones up there. If that was the only way that we could possibly limit the number in a multifamily thing was to do those kinds of things, then it would be, I feel more worth discussing or, you know, I'd be more more open to like, like, okay, we can do it then. But feels like there's a better one on the screen.
But I generally agree with that, that the this two bullets under the performance standards seem less important. Or that that's something that maybe could be added later. But it seems, it does seem like the top three kind of more effectively and they seem like sort of more administratively straightforward. The the one thing that to me would, if if this was the route you're going to take, the other thing I think would maybe need to be added is because the law is a little bit weird about HOAs, could you put into this that if the homeowners association explicitly prohibits this? That supersedes this process?
You didn't even have to say it. It already does.
That's true.
It already, I mean.
Yeah.
HOA, that's the thing about the situation we were talking about before, the HOA has can evict you, HOAs can evict you from a neighborhood.
Right, but we despised the last month with a a special use permit that the HOA should have superseded it and it didn't.
It was their responsibility, it should never come to us, it was their responsibility to police that, the HOA's responsibility, I feel like.
That may be an anomaly, we did see that one, but most most owners are gonna know that their HOA prohibits it and they're never going to apply because they know.
I think that was just a strain.
That was just a an odd behavior by that one owner, so I don't know that we.
Like what Bruce is saying about the inclusionary zoning from the get go, because I think it would put a new developer in a position where they've got to think about this. And it could change how they want to move forward with their development if they want to try to have short term rental rentals there. They could offset it with with some lower rents. So I think anything we can do that moves us away from special use permits, which we've seen, we vote one way, mayor commission votes another way, it's far too arbitrary. So we need either more by right or just outright.
I totally agree, number four is almost unencouragable. I mean, you just, there's it it'd be really hard to to manage that and figure out who's doing what and how, I mean. I just, yeah, I think I think it's, I think we need to make it as streamlined and simple as possible. If it's not that, maybe that's not possible.
I don't want to prolong this, but I did just a suggestion like I I the I I get the idea behind number four, like, do we want some objective SUP criteria? And I think, you know, things that leap to mind include like, does this property have sufficient off street parking to avoid burdening the neighbors? You know, when they're being, if it's being used as an STR. Are there particular conditions of the property in terms of you know, subpar setbacks from the neighboring homes that make it inappropriate, you know, like specific criteria where that would enable us to intelligently review a particular SUP application rather than what we have right now, which is, as you said, general criteria that don't really offer any guidance.
I mean, a long term rental. The two people living there are gonna have friends over, they're gonna have girlfriend or boyfriend or partner might visit. They're gonna have maybe they're having a gathering of friends, I mean, you're ultimately, you could be dealing with some of the same issues, maybe not as frequently, but still, I mean, there's still some similar things they're gonna deal with there, so I don't know.
If if the special use were to go away, if there's set, if there's support for that to not be part of this regulatory setup. Items one, two and three that are up there. Think folks are are comfortable with the general idea, but it might modify number one to say that you just get 10% by right. The only way to get above 10% in whatever percentage we ultimately land on is to do the inclusionary zoning. There is no special use approval for 10 to 25%.
Yes.
Streamline it, make it, yeah, simplify, absolutely.
And so as you're thinking that that would apply to undivided multifamily, but not to divided, divided, it would just not be.
Well, to Jen's statement about no, none in RM. I think some of that was inspired by the conversation that we heard with the Woodlake example, which is a divided multifamily development. So yes, that that was the idea.
I think those are good.
All right, I appreciate everybody's feedback and I I know this is one of those things, it's got everybody kind of twisted and 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 I I wish Mike was still here and and Monique, it it the amount of energy and thought outside of this room is greatly appreciated. And I don't want to diminish that. So I I know there was research going on beyond, he wasn't thinking, they weren't thinking about this just during this meeting. So staff super appreciates that, that's, we've got a really good group with you all to think about these things as you drive around town or as you're just taking a moment or when you notice something. That's what's going to make this ordinance better. And that's, I think, in part, the recognition that the mayor commission was giving by remaining this back is let's hear allow the planning commission a chance to focus on these topics one more time. And let's bring that input back so that they can have that as part of their thought process going forward. So thank you for that.
I think if I can just, I'm kind of, great idea to do it this way. And I just write something that we had to start thinking and voting on. So appreciate staff bringing it forward this way, very good job.
Yeah, one thing I just add to that is like, we keep talking about these big issues, future land use STRs at the end of these our meetings. And we're all kind of tired and over it and these are big questions and I just watched a lot of people today get shut down when they were bringing up the big questions like and we we never give ourselves time to actually talk about those. There's big things here about sort of the way we sanctify the single single family neighborhood, the way like, why is, if we think these are so bad for the housing market, why are they okay in RM? Like, we 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 sort of get shut down, we want to talk about these bigger questions, even though, so we've never talked about them. And and we get to them and then someone's like, no, 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 stop talking, we gotta stay on task. And I feel like we we're we're still not giving ourselves sort of like with fresh minds, starting with some of the bigger questions, we kind of start with these details. And at this point, it's it's probably not fixable, but it was, but it's the thing I observe every time is that we just can't quite go there because it's just too like petty and I don't know, out of out of scope with what we're supposed to be talking about, but they matter, these big questions about this, like they matter. And even like, I've heard a lot of statements tonight where I thought like, that's actually not correct or we don't know if that's correct or but we just kind of keep going because we have to keep going with that, we we never really can get some of these big questions answered as far as I'm concerned, like even there's, I will see that there's an assumption, it seems like, I I didn't see this tonight, but sometimes I think people assume that if you start, if you don't allow like STRs and commercial STRs in single family zones, that suddenly all those houses are going to go out of the market. We don't know that, like we don't know that everyone's gonna say, well, I can't do this anymore, so I'm gonna sell it. They're gonna turn it to a long term rental, they're gonna keep it as like a family cottage, they're gonna do like non-long term like traveling nurse rental things, they're gonna do a lot of different things because people are in commitments for a lot of reasons. And we never really talk about that there's a variety of reasons that people are doing this and it doesn't all fit into, you know, it's not like oh, we're suddenly gonna get 711 houses back on the market in the next two years, five, seven, 10 years, whatever that ends up being, I just don't see that necessarily being an assumption we can just.
So two things that staff has mentioned on that very point, Sarah, is is to give this body a chance to wrestle with topics and not have to vote on other business items. And so we have looked at in the summer months, when the mayor and commission take a pause from their regular business meeting, that would be an opportunity for this body to tackle some educational items. The way the cycles work, we might still have some voting items in there, but we'd have fewer, at least the thinking is. And then the holidays, which is not popular, I know, to have an extra meeting or not an extra meeting, but a meeting at all. But that would be an opportunity for us, say at a December planning commission meeting, first Thursday of that month to tackle a topic. You know, and we're gonna need to do that, especially if future land use is moving forward and we start getting into implementation of code changes that we want to see. Housing related code changes is going to take discussion of the topics that you were just bringing up.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to be able to talk about those things. What things we need to regulate and which things we need to leave as well.
Yeah, we didn't really fully even get into those, it's been an hour and 45 minutes, so we do need a longer time for that.
Yeah.
And I would just like.
Oh, you aren't truly afforded that, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to re- extend the invitation to mayor and commission to have a joint session on any of this, I know they didn't want to take us up on that this time, but if we don't get this all hammered out, I hope they'll take us up on that the next time.
Yeah, I'll pass that one.
All right.
Oh. Are is there, are, yep, are we done?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, as you all know, I emailed you about this before we went through this meeting. So this wasn't the result of having gone through this meeting. We are having, I'm making, I I'm putting on here reconsideration of the vote from last meeting on planning commission chair. I nominate Krista Morales, she is accepted via email.
Email, yes.
She's accepted that nomination.
A second, the motion.
Great. Oh, okay, great, so all all in favor, Krista Morales for planning commission chair. Anas, I nominate myself for vice chair.
Second.
On favor for me is vice chair, say aye. Anas, planning commission chairs report, I have no report. Bruce, planning directors report, you have a report.
Ma'am, thank you.
You have any miscellaneous announcements, anyone, anyone? Great. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
On favor.
All right.
Issue was that. And issue also
Can I?
Is that you are not the chair.